Okay, thank you. I'll call this meeting to order of the Morris Township Planning Board, December 5th, 2022. The legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying same will be executed. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Sonia on the roll call?
Here.
Mr. Nun.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Quillman?
Here.
Mr. Leto?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Dan Order?
Here.
Mr. Flowers?
Here.
Bobby?
Here.
Mr. Benoit?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
And I, Sonia Santiago, here. Perfect attendance.
Beautiful. Okay.
You're trying to make Santa's list, that's the thing.
The, um, first item on the agenda, Mr. Warner, do you want to just discuss this?
Oh, the resolution?
Resolution, right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my apologies. Del Barton signed resolution. The draft is being circulated among the professionals and applicants team, so it will be ready for adoption next meeting, which I guess will be in 2023.
Oh, don't we have a meeting later this week? This is our last meeting of the year.
Oh, it is our last meeting.
I believe it is.
Oh.
Am I incorrect?
No, you're right.
Just discussing the same thing. Do we have a meeting in two weeks, Sonia?
I don't think we do. I don't think we do. Do we have another meeting this year?
No, we're done.
This is the last one for the year. Okay, thank you. So then that will be for January.
January, then I could count.
So we'll proceed with our hearings. Sandy Solbites, Sonia, you want to read this into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Our next application is 511-222 Sandy Solbites Restaurant for the pipeline variant application. This is block 10501, line 2, 255 Speedwell Avenue, B11 Zone. It's a continuation from the November 23rd public hearing, having proposed to renovate the existing restaurant and convert it to a new restaurant to include outdoor dining.
Thank you, good evening. Again, Richard Stewart from the law firm of Lasser Hockman, on behalf of the applicant. At the last hearing, you heard from the project architect. Tonight, I have with me the project engineer and planner, who happened to be the same person, Mr. Michael Petrie of Petrie Engineering. I also have a principal of the applicant, should the board members have any questions of her. So I'd like to call Mr. Petrie at this time and to have him qualified as an expert in both engineering and planning.
Mr. Chairman, before we do, just one procedural point. I wanted to confirm for the board, members of the public applicants team, we have all nine regular members qualified to vote. Those that were not here last time have heard the tape and/or watched the tape and certified as such, so full compliment. And I don't, I believe, did I swear you in last time? No, let me swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And our board professionals remain under oath. I swore them in last time.
Could you please say your name again?
J. Michael Petrie, P.E.T.R.Y.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Petrie, can you just indicate your professional educational background for the board in terms of your qualifications to appear this evening as both a engineer and a planner for the applicant?
Certainly. I received my Bachelor in Architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology in 1984. I've been continuously employed in northern New Jersey for the last 38 years in site development and infrastructure improvement projects. I am licensed as a professional engineer for the past 30 years. I'm licensed as a professional planner by examination for the last 28 years, and I'm licensed as an architect in New Jersey for the past 27 years. I'm principal in the firm of Petrie Engineering LLC. We specialize in site development, infrastructure improvement projects. I have appeared on probably more than 1,000 occasions before planning and zoning boards throughout the state, although I have never testified before this board.
Welcome.
I'll count this as my 17th Morris County municipal.
Okay. No objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Petrie, why don't we start with the engineering testimony? Can you briefly describe for the board what's being proposed from an engineering standpoint?
Certainly. And what's on the, what's on the screen is the aerial photograph of the property with your tax map overlaid on it and zoning overlaid on that as well. The property in question is located just off the intersection of East Hanover Avenue and Speedwell Avenue. It is an L-shaped piece of property, and it is located in the B11 Zone. At the intersection, there is a gas station. To the right of our property along Speedwell, there is a dog grooming facility, and behind our property on Speedwell, there is a contractor's storage yard, and all of those are also in the B11 Zone. As most of you know, East Hanover Avenue is the municipal boundary between the township of Morris and Morris Plains. Speedwell Avenue is a state highway, Route 202, and East Hanover Avenue is a Morris County road. The St. Virgil's Church is located across the street, across Speedwell Avenue from the property. It, to the west, and it's located within the open space government use zone. Finally, across Hanover Avenue in Morris Plains, there's a laundromat, which is in the Morris Plains B2 Zone. We can turn to the survey, which is the next slide in the set.
Before we leave that one, was that one of the plans that was previously submitted more than 10 days in advance of this evening?
We submitted all of the exhibits, I believe, at the last hearing, and this was one of them.
Was this marked at the last hearing?
We hadn't referred to it yet, so I don't know that it was marked.
Why don't we put in stick tapes, as I like to say. A3 will be the aerial with the zoning overlay that you just testified. I had A1 and 2 covered last time.
Yeah, I have A1 and A2 from the last hearing, so this would be A3.
Thank you. And why don't we just, now we're on A4.
Yes. So A4 is the survey of the property. As you can see from what's on the screen, Speedwell Avenue runs along the bottom of the, of the screen, and Hanover Avenue runs along the left side of the screen. North is irregularly to the left, and the gas station property is in the hole between that L-shaped parcel. The property itself contains about 27,111 square feet. It has 151.15 feet of frontage along Speedwell Avenue, and it has 69.17 feet of frontage along East Hanover Avenue. Based upon the ordinance, both of these frontages are considered front yards. The easterly property line, which is along the top of this, is considered the rear yard, and the remaining lot lines are considered side yards. This building has been unoccupied for a period of time, but it previously operated as a restaurant. It sits on the westerly portion of the land, the fronts on Speedwell Avenue, and has a front yard setback of 16.89 feet to that structure, where 35 feet is required. This zone also requires a minimum side yard setback of 10 feet and combined side yard of 25 feet, where the existing building to the line immediately north of it has a .61 foot setback, and the overall combined setback is 65.30. Finally, the building has a rear yard setback of 67.05 feet, which is greater than the required 25 feet. In front of the building today, there's a small concrete patio with landscape planters. The property to the south and east of the building, which makes up the majority of the remainder of the site, is paved for parking. The parking lot is in relatively poor condition, in my opinion. There are several large potholes throughout. The striping has faded significantly. However, based upon the faded striping, there's about 52 parking spaces there. The spaces are all nine feet wide, but they vary in depth from anywhere from 14 feet to 18 feet. You can see that the existing spaces do occupy a portion of the front yard, which is not allowed in the zone. So on Speedwell, the first two spaces, one on either side, they are located in the front yard. And similarly, on Hanover Avenue, they are also, there are also spaces that are located in the front yard. That's not permitted in your ordinance. The Speedwell Avenue has a minimum setback of 13.10 feet, and the closest space on Hanover Avenue has a setback of 22.48 feet. Access to and from the parking lots are from two-way driveways off of each street, Speedwell and off of East Hanover. The refuse is currently stored within the existing parking lot. There is no designated area for it. It is not enclosed. As you can see, the existing site is almost entirely covered by impervious improvements. The existing impervious coverage, as calculated by our team, is 96.12%, where 75 feet is allowed. From a topographic perspective, the site is relatively flat. It slopes, it generally slopes from southeast to northwest. It slopes down from southeast to northwest. The site does not contain any storm sewer system to collect runoff generated by the site. The portion of the property in front of the building, where that patio is that I mentioned, that drains towards Speedwell Avenue. The remained, the remainder of the property drains in a easterly and northerly direction to the adjacent property, which ultimately is tributary to the system in Hanover Avenue. If we could turn to the layout sheet, which is in the set, but this one has been colored, so we might want to mark this as well. To complement the existing renovations and new outdoor patio that Ms. Nury testified about, we're proposing a complete reconstruction of the existing parking lot.
Can you just identify briefly A5, the colorized version of?
This is the layout sheet, SP2 in your set. We color it to make it a little easier to read from a distance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Overall, the parking lot will have a total of 54 head-in parking spaces, all of which will be striped 9 by 18 with a 24-foot wide drive aisle. As in the existing conditions, the park, parking spaces are located in the front yard. However, we designed the parking lot, so no spaces are closer to either Speedwell or Hanover than they are today. The curb cut on Speedwell is currently 39 feet. We anticipate that being reduced slightly. We're proposing to narrow it down to 24 feet. We understand that that needs approval by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. This will help better control the flow of traffic and reduce the speed of vehicles entering the site. Within the parking lot itself, you can see there's three ADA spaces that are closest to the front door. They're striped there. We put the loading area closest to the road, so that there is not a traffic movement in that location. So we've technically moved the parking a little bit further from the street itself. Additionally, the parking lot will have three EV charging stations, which will service six of the spaces, one of which is ADA accessible. So the spaces that are striped here in green, plus the, the third EV station, the third handicap space, the one furthest from Speedwell, will all be EV spaces. As you're aware, based upon the state law, the EV spaces count two for one in the parking calculations, which means technically we're providing 60 parking spaces on site. We have incorporated new sidewalks into this design, because the sidewalks that are there are either non-existent or undersized. The sidewalk along the rear of the building is approximately seven feet wide, and the sidewalk on the southerly side of the building varies between six in the rear and four in the front. A new loading area is striped at the rear of the building near the door to the kitchen. That's the hatched area and off of the northwesterly corner of the building. That hatched area is 17 and a half feet wide and 18 feet deep. We've also incorporated a new refuse collection area, and that is located in the southwesterly corner of the property, within what was a portion of the parking area. That will be reconstructed with a concrete pad and a finish on the exterior that will match the building. Finally, we've introduced several new landscape areas. At both of the driveways on either side, we have landscape areas that we are providing, and in the rear right corner, we have additional landscape areas that we are providing. These five areas, plus the island at the turn, where the parking turns along the building. So these five areas total approximately 2,200 square feet, or 8.09%, which brings the impervious coverage down from 96.12 to 88.03. While we understand that the minimum or maximum impervious coverage allowed within the zone is 75%, we understand we're not in conformance. However, this new layout brings it much closer to conformance than what currently exists today. From a grading and drainage perspective, and we're going to switch this slide to the next one. And this is a colored version of the grading drainage and utility plan, which is SP3 in your sets.
That'll be A6, thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, the existing parking lot generally slopes from the southwest to the northeast, and the parking lot does not have any curbs. As part of the proposed improvements, we're installing curbs and we're installing drainage. So we have a drainage system that begins at the island at the southwest corner of the building, and it continues across the back of the property with a pair of inlets there that ultimately connects to the county drainage system in Hanover Avenue. We're fortunate that there is a storm drain literally located at the corner of our property. This system was also designed to pick up the roof leaders, and those are the dash lines you see that run along the back of the building and the southerly side of the building, so that all of the stormwater runoff from this site will ultimately be collected and be discharged directly into the system. The benefit of that is that it won't be impacting the adjacent property owner, and it won't be running across the sidewalk and freezing in the winter. So there's a overall benefit to the, to the neighborhood. Finally, if we could turn to the lighting plan, which is the next slide in the set, and this is a colored version of SP5 in your set.
A7.
To light the new parking lot, we are proposing to install eight new light fixtures throughout the lot itself. Three of those fixtures are building-mounted fixtures. They are located, two on the southerly side of the building and one on the westerly side of the, I'm sorry, easterly side of the building. And there are five pole-mounted lights, one of which is in the island at the southwest corner of the building. The other four are on the perimeter of the parking lot, located at the perimeter of the parking area. Along, we put them along the stripes in the parking spaces, so that they are out of harm's way. We have illuminated the sidewalk with the fixtures that are mounted on the building. The, those building-mounted fixtures are mounted at 18 feet high, and the pole-mounted fixtures are mounted at 20 feet high. The four fixtures along the perimeter will have houseside shields on them, despite the fact that they are adjacent to commercial uses. We don't want to have spill over into our, into the adjacent properties. All of the fixtures that are proposed here are LED fixtures, or all of them are 4,000 Kelvin. From a planning perspective...
But before we get into the planning perspective, why don't we see if the board members have any questions regarding the engineering, unless you think...
Six and a half dozen of them.
We could do that. Mr. Leto?
Light requirements?
Yes, we do.
4,000 Kelvin, 3,000 Kelvin, is there?
No, we don't.
We don't have a problem with colors?
Our spec is old when it's compared to lighting, but we do have a lighting requirement with a... Why don't you go on, I'll find it.
That is my only question, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If I may, Mr. Chairman, on that note, though, relatedly, the Environmental Commission had certain recommendations, and we addressed Kel...
You did address them, by the way.
Lighting temperature and related issues before. They recommend 300, excuse me, 3,000 Kelvin, 300 Kelvin, but as well as dark sky compliant lighting, shortest period possible that the lights are on, i.e. shut-off times, but for security level lighting, positioning and shielding to minimize the view, which you've addressed some degree already, and total brightness. So I don't know, maybe since we're on lighting, that's an appropriate time to address that, those recommendations.
Have you seen the environmental recommendations?
I have. In, in short, the fixtures that we have selected are dark sky compliant. We do have 4,000. They have requested that their preference is 3,000. I have no problem making them 3,000. The fixture does come in at 3,000, and we have, we have no problem switching to that if that is the condition that the board would want to impose.
If I may, is there any downside from your perspective to the 3,000 Kelvin versus, excuse me, yeah, versus 4,000 Kelvin?
No, the, the, the 4,000 Kelvin gives you a little bit brighter light, so we get a little bit more lighting in, in some of the areas, but the 3,000 Kelvin is a little bit softer. If, if I were in a, if I were in an area that was adjacent to residences, I would use 3,000 automatically. I have no problem if that's something that the board wants to see. I did read the Environmental Commission's comment. I'm sympathetic to their, to their wants, despite the fact that we're in a pretty commercial area.
All right, thank you. Why don't we go with you?
Yes, yeah. I have a couple of questions following up on the lighting. Did, you may have mentioned, I missed it. Did you talk about what the hours are and when they'd be turned off or?
Before we get to that, why don't we just resolve the 3,000? Let's go to 3,000 on the, as a condition? Okay.
Okay, the lighting requirements in a parking area shall have an average, average illumination of one and one-half foot candles throughout the parking lot. Average.
Okay.
And he's, he's, his aisleway is slightly brighter than one and a half foot candles, but along the edges, he's a little bit less. So without doing a full averaging plan, it seems he's got as many under one and a half as he has over one and a half, so.
The chart that's provided in the lower left-hand corner of the plan indicates that our parking lot average is 1.6 foot candle. Our maximum is three and a half, our minimum is .5, and our average to minimum is 3.2. So I think we, I think we covered the, the ordinance requirements.
Yeah, exactly. Perfect. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leto?
Just to finish that question I asked, is there a temperature requirement? We don't, our, our spec is old. We aren't into the LED phase with our spec. It's still incandescent lighting. So I wasn't making a case for 3,000 or 4,000. I just wanted to know if we had...
No, I understand. That's a good question.
Yeah, just, either one's agreeable with me, but if they want to stipulate to 3,000 and satisfy the Environmental Commission, maybe that's a win for everyone.
Well, my question to that is, will the 3,000 meet their minimum?
I don't know without running it. But we'll, you know, look, it may mean that we have to wiggle the, the location of the fixtures a little bit.
Okay.
And I'm thinking more, more along the lines of, you know, probably the, I'm just going to point the screen. In the back of the building, this wall-mounted may have to shift that way a little bit. This one may have to shift into the nose a little bit more. I tried to keep it out of the nose. I don't like it in the turn, but we may have to get that in order to get that back corner, because they're, they're, they don't have the same throw. It is a little bit different, not dramatically, but a little bit.
Sure it is. Okay.
But we have, we have a tenth of a foot candle to spare, so I think we can meet it.
Okay. That makes me very happy. 3,000 is, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, so did you mention the hours? Are these on during, when, business hours or overnight?
They will be on during business hours. We probably will need some for security purposes. I mean, this is a relatively busy intersection. I would suggest that the building-mounted fixtures would probably be the likely ones to, to stay on a security lighting, because that keeps the, the maximum amount of light next to the building and not next to the property line. But as I indicated, we have commercial neighbors here, so we're not, we're not worried about disturbing people's sleep.
Right.
But I would, I would think that for security purposes, we would want the three building-mounted lights on.
All night?
Yes.
Okay. And then the parking lot ones would, would go off at a certain time or be dimmed? Or how would that work?
Yes, I would say that the parking lot lights, the perimeter pole-mounted lights, could go off, let's say, 45 minutes after closing. It gives, it gives the staff time to clean up, button up, and get safely back to their cars.
And what time is that? Did you, I don't, the closing time, we don't know yet?
I don't have that, but...
9:00 PM.
So the lights would be off by 9:45, 10 o'clock?
Yeah, let's say 10 o'clock.
Okay, that's good. I just want to clarify a couple other points you made. I understood you to say that the handicapped and the EV were the same spots. Is that right?
Well...
No.
One, one handicap space has to be an EV space. That's the code. So we have six EV spaces, two here, two here, and two here. So basically, the third handicap space in and the one next to it are EV spaces. Basically, what these EV charging stations look like is there's a, there's a post, almost like a bollard light, right? And they have, they have hookups in it with the, with the cords on it. So if you put it at the corner of two spaces, it can service two cars. So it's a dual-port system, and so you have two here, two here, two here.
Okay. Thank you. And I wanted to ask if you could re-explain for me the, what you said about the curb. You were changing the, that, I didn't catch, I didn't understand what you were saying there with the curb change.
Okay. There's not a lot of curb today in this parking lot. There's some, but there's not a lot of curb. Our, our intention is to construct, and our plans call for the construction of new curb, so that A, the pavement stays in better shape, because one of the purposes of curbing is so that the edge of the pavement doesn't, what's called ravel over time, it doesn't break off. The second purpose of curbing is to contain stormwater runoff. When the water comes down the hill and hits the curb, it doesn't go over the curb, but if there's no curb there, it goes right to the next property. So the intention is to put in curbing so that we can control drainage and get it into the storm system, so that it's not running across your sidewalks and icing up in the winter.
Okay, that's the part. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Murphy, did you have something?
I did have a question. So having been a fan of Hunan when it was in operation, I used to go there a lot. A part of the use of those front yard parking spaces was for pickup. So there were a lot of orders for pickups. People would just pull into those couple of spaces in the front, grab their food, and then depart. So my question actually is if those are set back from the front of the building, is there an allowance for pickup parking, which would be a quick in and out and convenient to the front door? I mean, it just seems that, that, that's a, that's a customer service question, and, and it's something that certainly I personally enjoyed when I was working with the restaurant before.
The, the simple answer to your question is, to start, by, by federal law, the ADA spaces have to be the spaces closest to the door. So these three spaces that are designated for handicap have to be there.
Okay.
If they're not there, either I'm in trouble, or I have to have a really good reason not to put them there.
Okay.
So those spaces are boxed. The next three spaces are open. If they, if they needed to do pickup spaces, those could be available.
Yeah, I, and I know you don't know the operational requirements, but I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, as a consumer of restaurant food on the run, that's a, that's a nice convenience to have something like that.
I understand. I would, I would prefer to have the pickup spaces further away from the driveway coming in, because... because the spaces, the spaces that are in for pickup, in and out quick, a lot of turnover, they're the ones with the most movements. You don't want them right here, it affects the traffic flow into the site from the state highway. We want them further away so that those.
Understand, but they're also further away from the door. Yeah, I, I hear you.
Mr. Quillen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions about the E V charging stations and about parking, and then also about stormwater. First, on the E V charging stations, you showed Ms. Wilson where the, where the charging stations are, but you, I, I'm remote, so for, for my benefit, if you can, if you can share your screen again, for my benefit and probably for Mr. Flowers' benefit as well, if you can, if you can review that again, that would be helpful. It, it looks like you, you had mentioned that the, that the E V charging stations are the parking spaces outlined in green. Are some of those in the rear of the building? That's what I seem to see.
Okay.
I can't.
See my cursor here?
Yes.
Okay, so these two spaces right here.
Okay, so there's one bollard for those two spaces?
Is that right? Space here.
Okay.
And. Sorry, we're on Wi-Fi, so the mouse is a little bit jumpy. And I have about zero patience for that.
Me too.
Okay, coming back yet? Okay, so the, the final, the third handicap space and then the first space next to it, going to the east, those are the other two E V spaces, they're striped in green on, on this sheet, I, I don't know if you can see that on.
I, I, I can see that, and I did understand the handicap space and the one next to it, but in the rear of the building, there are four other spaces. So those are two bollards, two bollards, four spaces in the rear of the building, is that right?
That is correct, and the reason that they're separated, quite honestly, is because there's a staircase there. They come back, so we couldn't put them next to one another, because these, this bollard that it works on takes up space, and it, it pinches the sidewalk where that stair is, and it wouldn't meet ADA requirements, so we had to separate them.
Okay, so there is a rear entrance to the, to the restaurant there, right there where that, where that one white stripe is between the two E V pairs.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. On the parking spaces, the, can you say what the, what the requirement is in our ordinances for the number of parking spaces for this restaurant?
Yes, the, the parking requirement for this restaurant is fifty-nine point eight spaces.
Okay, and with the credit from the E V charging stations, you.
We have sixty.
We have sixty.
So we have fifty-four striped and the six credits.
There's also an ordinance that requires that the spaces be ten feet wide rather than nine feet wide, that's a. So that's a variance that you're looking for.
Yes, and I'll speak to that in my planning testimony.
Okay, I guess I'll, I'll wait for that then. And then on the stormwater, I just have a question, I think this is, well, for you, I, I'll say, you know, it looks great, it looks like a huge improvement to put drains in the parking lot and to, to drain out to the, to the storm sewer. Enormous improvement over what is there now, so that's great. I, I have a question for probably Mr. Hanson about drainage off a roof into the storm sewer, because I know homeowners can't do something like that, but commercial properties, I guess, can, or perhaps if it drains into the county storm sewer system, or what, what is the story there?
Actually, anything could be drained into a county storm drain. So can, in a residential zone, a homeowner can put leader pipes into a, a catch basin with underground piping. So what they're doing here is preventing surface runoff from sheeting across the parking lot. They're collecting it in a series of catch basins along with the roof water and their, which would have come down, hit the, hit the parking lot and then drained across the parking lot, and they're directing it to the storm drainer system out in East Hanover Avenue. What they've got there is, is acceptable. They'll probably have to put calculations together for the county engineering department, but the, the water's getting out to the county roads anyway. So I don't see a big difference out here, and since they're reducing the impervious coverage, it's a benefit to the township, and it should end up being a benefit to the county in the long run.
Catch basin, the catch basins just hold the water temporarily and then divert it down into the, into the storm sewer, or do they have seepage down into the, into the ground as well?
No, it's just a junction point for pipes to come together before it's piped to another location. In this instance, on the south side of the building, they're collecting the roof leader at two locations and combining it with surface runoff from the front portion of the parking lot, putting it into a piping system and taking it to the back of the parking lot, and since that area is going to be curbed, the drainage will flow along the curb line in the parking lot and get picked up by that drain and then be taken to the corner of the parking lot where it'll pick up more surface runoff and then out into the back of the catch basin on the county road. Because the area is, is kind of on the flat side, and because it's going to be curbed, it's, it's relatively easy to collect all the flows out there so that they don't accumulate. To one point, he's, the, the parking lot is broken up into three sub-basins, and he's treating each sub-basin separately along with combining the roof runoff into one of the portions of the parking lot runoff.
Okay, all right, thank you. And again, I think it's a big improvement over what's there now, so it looks nice and the reduction in impervious coverage, even though it doesn't meet the ordinance requirement, it's a pretty large improvement over what's there now, so again, I think it looks good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. By.
Just a quick question, as I recall, the, there is no storm man, water management system now, it just flows all over the parking lot, correct?
That is correct.
And because of the way that this is being done and redone, this, this stormwater management system is not required.
That is, that is correct.
But you are, you're doing it just to make improvements.
There, there is, there is a benefit to, in my opinion, there's a benefit to the property owner, but there's also a benefit to the community.
Okay, I just, that's what I thought, I just wanted to get that, make sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. By. Any other board members or professionals? Dave, now Paul?
I just have one, the, what kind of truck deliveries do you anticipate? And where I'm coming from, Michael, is the adequacy of the area that you have hatched in terms of, I guess that's eighteen feet deep, if I'm doing that right, and, you know, will it spill over to the access aisle or parking space?
Well, most of the restaurant deliveries happen off peak hours. There, there may be van deliveries, like for bread or something like that during peak, and they would fit in that, but off-peak-hour deliveries are going to, are going to be the norm here.
Okay, so you'll have the availability of adjacent spaces if the size of the truck can't be accommodated.
Exactly.
Thank you, that, that's all I had.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everything in the Environmental Commission's report was covered, and highway access permit will be required, and that'll be a condition of approval, correct?
If, if, if a highway access permit is required, or if we can, if we are able to gain a waiver from the D O T, one or the other will be provided to the board.
And I'm shamelessly stealing from our planners' fine memo. The, the. And I, I guess I could simply ask if everything else was covered on yours. In August thirty-one.
I'm sort of waiting for the planning testimony.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's a good point, some of the more variants are least related, so my apologies for stealing too soon from you.
Okay, so then at this point, we'll open up to questions from the public on this witness on engineering. If any members of the public have questions for this witness, you may proceed to the microphone. Seeing none, then we'll close the public questioning period, and you can proceed with, with the planning?
Yeah. Why don't we move on to the planning testimony now? Can you identify for the board what variants the applicant is seeking, and why in your professional opinion you believe that, that they can be granted?
Yes, the applicant is seeking variances for, as was mentioned, the size of the parking stalls to be nine by eighteen rather than ten by eighteen. The applicant is seeking setbacks for the signs that are being replaced. We are matching the existing setbacks, however, as the architect indicated in her testimony, these are new signs. They will be the same square footage, and they will be roughly the same shape, but the setbacks on Speedway Avenue is currently five feet, where seventeen and a half is required, and on Hanover, it is eleven point two six feet, where seventeen and a half feet is required. So we have a front yard parking setback as well for both the parking on Speedway, which will be thirteen point one zero feet, and on Hanover, which will be twenty-two point four eight feet, both of which require thirty-foot setbacks. And we are matching, in that case, the existing condition. The impervious coverage, despite the fact that we are reducing it from ninety-six point one two to eighty-eight point oh three, we do not meet the seventy-five foot requirement. And finally, as was raised by the, in the technical review committee meeting, the, there is an interpretation as to whether the mural on the side of the building, that's going to be located on the south side of the building, constitutes a separate sign, and if so, what the area of that sign would be considered, since it does have the logo in it, but it is overall a painting. So there's that sign as well. As I indicated in my testimony, the subject property is located in the B eleven zone. Again, we note that Speedway Avenue is a state highway, New Jersey State Highway two oh two. East Hanover Avenue is a county road, County Road six fifty. As indicated, the property is irregularly shaped, it's almost L-shaped, in fact, as it wraps around the corner BP Gas Station that's on the southeast corner of Speedway and East Hanover Avenue. The latest master plan update adopted in August of two thousand seventeen suggests that the B eleven zone be broken into a series of separate zoning districts, and I quote, "Because each of the areas is unique in terms of its physical and use characteristics." It goes on further to state, and I quote, "Each one of which would have its own use and bulk standards to better reflect existing conditions." It also speaks to the maintenance of the existing commercial areas within the town as a primary goal. In fact, it is goal number four, and specifically, it states redevelopment and renovation of existing sites along Ridgedale, Hanover, and Speedway avenues. It does recognize this intersection as one that impacts vehicular traffic within the area, but goes on to state that the county has completed a traffic study of the area that was prepared to address the overall problems associated with this intersection. As such, this immediate area is recognized as an important part of the commercial element within the community to provide services to the township. The variances that I've already outlined are part of an overall renovation of the specific site. In my opinion, that renovation gives the community exactly what your master plan seeks. We are looking to redevelop the site, we're looking to completely renovate a building, completely renovate a parking lot, incorporate drainage and lighting to your current standards, and make this not only a better facility, but a safer facility and a facility that protects the adjacent property owners. We have an existing developed site where the impervious of ninety-six point one two percent exceeds the seventy-five percent requirement. Our existing parking lot does not meet the front yard setback restriction of thirty-five feet. Our existing parking on Speedway Avenue is thirteen point one zero feet from the right-of-way line, and our existing property, our existing parking on East Hanover Avenue is twenty-two point four eight feet from the right-of-way line. Our existing stall sizes that are striped today vary in size from nine by fourteen to nine by eighteen, where the code requires ten by twenty parking spaces. Our existing signs on both Speedway and East Hanover do not meet the minimum setback of seventeen point five feet. So we have a series of non-conforming conditions today. And while we affect some of them in a positive fashion, we will continue to not meet the ordinance requirements with many of our proposed improvements. However, we feel that we are proposing enough improvements that there are specific criteria that we will meet. We are reducing the impervious coverage to eighty-eight point oh three percent. While it still doesn't meet the seventy-five percent limitation, it does bring the site closer to conformance. And overall, less stormwater will run off from this site than does today, period, stop. It's not like we have a detention system and we're reducing peak flows, there will be less runoff because we are, we are reducing impervious. Similarly, the parking stall sizes today that vary will all be standardized and will all be restripped to reflect nine by eighteen foot stalls. Again, this represents an improvement over the condition, existing condition, but will continue to fall short of the ten by twenty foot stalls required by your ordinance. The signed setbacks and the parking setbacks remain unchanged, and we're requesting variances for those condition. However, we are restriping the parking lot, we are curbing the parking lot, so we are improving the condition of the parking lot by incorporating those changes. Rather than put a Band-Aid on the existing sign, the architect and owner have chosen to replace those signs. We're replacing them in the same location, at the same size, at the same height, and with the same setback as exists today. In my opinion, the variances that are being requested as part of this application can be granted either under the C one or the C two criteria. In terms of a C one argument, the existing conditions, in terms of the improvements on this site, represent the unique topography that affects the redevelopment of this property. Clearly, we're dealing with an existing building, existing site improvements in an established commercial neighborhood. Those conditions that exist today and don't meet your ordinance requirements create the hardship. We are reusing the portions of the site that are improved today, but we're making them better. Our proposal improves some of the conditions, specifically the stall size and the impervious coverage, while not affecting the others, the parking and the signed setbacks. I suggest that the C two criteria applies as well, given the fact that these variances are specifically and keenly tied to the redevelopment of this site, which has a direct benefit to the overall area. I'll also note that the standardization of stall sizes advances the site's safety as it relates to traffic flow. And a nine by eighteen stall size is a standard size within the industry. Your, your master plan even suggests that it be considered for, for adoption in your ordinance, that has not been done yet, but it's, it's in there for consideration. I further note that the reduction in impervious advances both the protection from flood by associated reduction in stormwater runoff, as well as the overall neighborhood beautification as the reduction allows for additional landscape areas. Again, both of these purposes of planning be and I respectively, while the stall size and the traffic flow is purpose of planning H. From a negative criteria standpoint, I offer that the impact of these variances on the public good is nonexistent. The community already recognizes both the signs and the parking as they relate to the right-of-ways. These are normal drive-by conditions that people in the area have come to accept. The impervious coverage represents a reduction in the overall existing condition by more than. The impervious coverage represents a reduction in the overall existing condition by more than eight percent. That is, that is a significant figure for a site of this size. As such, I see no significant impact on the public good. In fact, any such impact is positive in nature. As for the zone plan and zoning ordinance, again, I find that there's no detriment to the intent and purpose of these documents. In fact, your master plan, as I indicated, makes a recommendation that your stall sizes be reduced to reflect the accepted standards in terms of nine by eighteen stalls and twenty four foot wide drive aisles. We are in keeping with that recommendation despite the fact that it has yet to be implemented within the municipality. We are also improving that condition over what exists today. Similarly, your master plan suggests that the B eleven zone be broken down to be reflective of developed conditions in each individual area. Our plan does exactly that. It takes the existing conditions that have historically serviced this site. We're practical, doesn't deviate any further from any of the standards based upon the proposed improvements. In fact, it improves on the existing condition by implementation of current lighting, current striping, EV spaces and a drainage system. Based on that, I find that our application actually, actually supports the intent and purpose of your zone plan and poses no substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance. As such, I find it clear that we have met both the positive and negative criteria associated with the variances respect, requested and respectfully ask for this board's consideration of those variances.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I know that nine by eighteen on the parking stall is the standard size, correct?
That is correct.
Do you, are you familiar with other towns that have the larger stall size like we do? Recommendation?
I do, in fact, some, some stipulate in different types of uses wider stalls.
I believe ours specifically recommends for retail and commercial, the ten by twenty, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And if you're, if you're a retail use that has shopping carts, things like that, that makes a lot of sense. What we have found in terms of variances such as this, that in some instances it helps to have, you know, what we call the, the double stripe, so that you can, you can center the car better within the space. And that is a reasonable condition in my opinion. But a, a nine by eighteen stall is a, is a standard accepted stall in most, in most instances. And, and we think that in an instance like this, where you're not, you're not coming out with goods, you're literally going into a restaurant to eat, that you can, you, it can accommodate the nine by eighteen stall size.
Okay, so you, you would see the ten by eighteen or ten by twenty as being more suitable for, like if there's shopping carts or a store where you would have a car, a cart, right?
Yes, or if you're coming, if you're, if regularly people are walking out of that store with goods.
Okay, I, I appreciate the way you tied your comments to the recommendations in our master plan. And I know that dealing with this parking size was one of those recommendations. So we have looked at it and I will just say that I'm in favor of looking at it again. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Quillen?
Thank you. So on the, on the subject of parking and the capacity of the restaurant, I know we have an ordinance that requires a certain number of parking spaces. Do you have a view as to what the capacity of the restaurant is and what number of parking spaces is actually reasonable for, for the restaurant?
The, the restaurant has a seating capacity inside of a hundred and seventeen seats. By ordinance, you're, you require two and a half spaces per seat, which requires a total of forty six point eight spaces for the inside seating. There is a maximum of fifty two seats outside. Your ordinance requires four spaces per seat outside for a total of thirteen spaces required. And the combination of those two numbers is fifty nine point eight spaces and we are proposing by law sixty. So we are compliant with your ordinance in terms of parking numbers.
Do you find the requirement to be reasonable in terms of the size of the restaurant? The, the ratios for in, inside seating and for outside seating? Do you, do you find that to be comparable to what other towns do?
Your indoor seating number is pretty, pretty conservative. Most, most municipalities look at three. I've seen numbers starting to go higher because of the tendency of people to, to Uber. Use, I'll start, use Rideshare. I don't want to promote any. Using Rideshare to go to restaurants. So I think, I think numbers are going to start to go up. You're going to see them over time go up. I don't know if Mr. Phillips agrees with that statement, but that, that's what we're starting to see in terms of the counts that we do in parking lots.
You could, as an alternative, increase the width of your parking spaces, have fewer parking spaces and ask for a different variance, a variance on the number of parking spaces as opposed to a variance on the width of the parking spaces.
That, that is true. We could, we could certainly do that. We would probably lose we'd probably lose four spaces overall. It might, it might reduce the width of our loading area a little bit. But basically for every, for every nine spaces, you'd lose a space. So if you looked at the southern, the line of park on the southerly side, you'd lose a space there. If you look at the, the easterly side, you'd probably lose two spaces there. And if you looked at the, the westerly side as it abuts the back of the building, I, I think you'd be able to get away with just losing one in that row. But it might, it might tighten up this, this loading area a little bit. So if, if that's a preference that this board had, I don't think the applicant would have a problem with it. I think that the stall width variance, the stall size variance is a, from a planning perspective, is an easier sell. The parking, if the parking doesn't fit on the site, where does it go? You know, that's how I always look at parking variances. And in this instance, there's not a good place for it to go.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah, it'd probably go into the property next door, which is not fair to them.
Your mention of double striping, I think is a very interesting one. I came across a parking lot that was double striped recently and I thought, hey, this is a great arrangement. People park in between the inner stripes and these, these, these spaces are wider than nine feet, I'm certain of it. So I convinced myself that the spaces I was looking at were wider than nine feet and then I paced them off and they were nine feet. So it's an optical illusion. And I think it's a very worthwhile thing to have double striping. So if the applicant is willing to, to put in double striping, I think that would be great if you're willing to go with that.
Again, as I said, if that were, if that were a condition that the board imposed, I think that's a reasonable condition and we would accept that as a condition. I'll take that as a stipulation.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Quinnel is finished? I don't know if he's done.
Quillen, are you done?
With the stipulation of double striping on nine foot parking spaces, I am done. The, the, let me just say that, I'm sorry, the, the eighteen foot depth versus twenty foot depth, I'm a little confused about what our ordinance recommends and I don't, or what our ordinance specifies. And I don't think it's necessary to get into that right now. There are some vehicles on the road that are longer than eighteen feet, but they are fairly rare, I believe, passenger vehicles. So with that, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you. So just, just so you know, I am in favor of you staying at nine by eighteen and perhaps adding double striping as opposed to trying to mess with the size or width of the, of the parking spots. Because as you say properly, if we can't accommodate the parking, where does it go? There's no place really for it to go. So meeting our current standard, I think is the right approach. My question has to do with the testimony from last meeting. And I didn't hear it addressed at all in this discussion, but I'd like to ask a question about the outdoor seating. And I don't know if it's to be directed to this witness or to our professionals. The question came up last time about the outdoor seating and its, its viability, whether it would cause any issues because of the state road and whatnot. And then there was also a comment that just down the way, TIFs has outdoor seating, which is right up against the road. So I wasn't clear on how that got resolved, whether that's something that has to be explored more or if there's a, some kind of state permit that has to have. Can, can someone speak to how we ensure that that outdoor seating is going to be okay?
I'm not aware of a stipulation in the DOT's requirement that, that says you can't, you can't have outdoor seating. But as part of our application, either for a waiver or for a permit, we will make the, we'll make the request from DOT.
From DOT, okay. And so, so one assumes that since there's another instance of restaurant with outdoor seating, basically mirroring what you're asking for, although perhaps not as attractive what you're, as what you're proposing. That should, that shouldn't be a problem. I just wanted to make sure that that was not going to be an issue.
I think that's a good point because I'm going to take what I heard at the League of Municipalities Conference as gossip until we know for sure what, what, what the rules are.
Okay, thank you.
Or hearsay, is that a better word? Any other board members with questions? Gossip.
Oh gossip.
Yeah. Oh geez, gossip. I agree with that. Any other board members, questions for this witness? Or professionals? Dave, do you?
I don't have any.
Paul?
I do, but I just want to first comment on the parking. I, I think for this use, the, the nine foot is adequate. I think the, the applicant's witness kind of testified as to which uses you might consider for the ten foot width. And I would concur with that and also agree with him about, you know, I like the fact that there could be a cushion of the number of spaces here. I mean, if the restaurant's popular, I, I would agree. Where, where is there going to be the ability to park nearby without basically, you know, finding some residential street or parking on some other commercial property? So that's just my professional opinion for the record. I do have a couple of questions about the signage. The, can you, the, the two existing freestanding signs, can you just go over where they're located now?
Yes. So the, the exist, there's an existing sign. It's on Speedway Avenue, it's literally right in front of the door. And there's an existing sign in the island at, at East Hanover Avenue that's right, literally rotated right where the cursor is right now. So it's, it's in the, the north west corner of the parking lot at Hanover Avenue and literally right in front of the front door today.
And the reason I ask that, I think it's important for the board to understand, and I think I raised this the last meeting, is that technically, because they're not simply refacing the existing signs, they're actually putting up new signs. The dimensions are pretty much the same in terms of area, but there's slight little differences in the shape of the, of the sign, is that they do require variance relief in this zone for two signs. Only one freestanding is allowed, but I think it's important that they do have two frontages here. And that's basically what precipitated my asking the, the question on the two freestanding signs.
Yes, and from a, from a, a traffic safety perspective, these are both busy roads. These are both, one is a state highway, the other is a county road, so people are moving on these roads. You want them to be able, you want drivers to be able to identify the entrances from a distance so that they don't slam on their brakes when they get there and, and try to get in because there's no signage. In both instances, these signs, the sign locations are the same, the sign heights are the same, the sign setbacks are the same, despite the fact that they're new signs. I, I agree that variances are required for them, but I think they're appropriately sized and appropriately located to allow people on the roads to see them and maintain a safe circulation pattern within, within those roads.
And they do comply with the height and area requirements for freestanding signs?
They do.
Great. Then putting a mural aside for a second, are there any other building or mounted facade signs other than the mural?
No.
Okay. So the zone allows basically two signs. And they are then, if you count the mural as a sign, it would be three because they have the two freestanding. My own, I mean, the islands is, the ordinance is silent on the mural issue. My own opinion is, is that because I think the name of the restaurant is part of the mural.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is an identification. How you would measure that within the context of the, you know, of the, of the entire mural, I'm not sure. But just from, from a technical standpoint, I think some portion of that mural would be considered a, a sign. But again, the ordinance does allow one freestanding sign and a facade sign. It's just that they're seeking the, the second freestanding sign, which again, is an existing condition, even though they're putting up new signs. I just wanted the board to sort of understand that and I think the witnesses concur. And that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Just to stay with the facade, the mural slash facade sign a, a bit more, though the, the ordinance permits facade signage up to five percent of the facade. Sort of our board planners point, how much of that mural is a sign? If the entirety, as I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, Paul. If the entirety of the mural is considered a sign, where at thirty percent of the facade, well in excess of five percent, if a smaller portion, obviously we could all recognize, but maybe it's five percent, maybe it's more than five percent, somewhere in between five and thirty. But I think, given our planner's interpretation and given, which I happen to concur with, and given the fact that it could be as much as a thirty percent of the facade sign, we have to assume it's thirty percent, I think. And the applicant is seeking that magnitude of relief with respect to that third sign, the facade sign. Would that be a fair characterization?
Yes, it would be.
Nothing further.
So if I understand you correctly, the, the mural, for all intents and purposes, for this application, if we consider the entire thing as a sign, the variance would be a third sign plus a sign in excess of five percent of the facade.
Right, as much as thirty percent. And I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that, Paul, that the, with our signs, pillars and columns and things, we, we consider part of the sign, even though it might not have the name on it or.
Yeah, I mean, this is a little different. The mural, I think, is kind of a little different. That's kind of why I went through the distinctions. So maybe we can conservatively say that based on the most conservative interpretation, it would be thirty percent. Although obviously the, the sandies, even if you squared off the sandies, it would be less than thirty percent.
That's right. And I see it more as artwork, but that's just me.
And I do too.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I think if there were, if the word sandies wasn't on there in the restaurant and you just had the painted mural, there'd be no issue, right?
Correct.
You might question the taste of it. I happen to like it, so I'm not. So the fact that you're putting the, a name on it now, conservatively, we're saying then the entire surface now becomes a sign, not just the, not just the wording. However, if it was a painted a blank wall and not with a, not with that, would that still be considered a sign? The whole thirty percent, if you just put the words on a blank painted wall?
That's a good point.
It would be the area of the lettering would be the sign.
So the fact that they're using different colors makes the whole thing a sign.
I think whether you, and it's, and it's really, I think, that's why we have planners. The, as to how much of this, you know, is it a sign and how much of it is a sign? The conservative lawyer says thirty percent max, with, with everyone recognizing that the magnitude of the lettering is what it is. I don't know if we've squared it off.
So I just, while this was going on, asked the applicant, how much would it be based on the square off? And they're saying somewhere between five and ten percent. So it's, I mean, you could take the position that if you were to, to assume that it was, at least that portion was part of the sign, it, it kind of close to meeting the intent of the ordinance, which is a maximum of five. it, it kind of close to meeting the intent of the ordinance, which is a maximum of 5%.
I lean toward doing that for the same, for the, for the only reason because we don't know what's coming next. And this way we can say, well, we approved that one was between 5 and 10, not the 30. So if we could stipulate that based upon the size.
If we can stipulate that the applicant actually provide that measurement, and then we can put that in the resolution in terms of the area of the sign on the building.
Board members, do you have any?
With, with, with the recognition of the board, so that the board can make a determination that it's somewhere between 5 and 10%. So 10% is the maximum squared off portion?
I mean, I, the applicant can speak, you know, for themselves. I, I'm confident that it's probably not going to be more than 10% just visually observing it, but I, I don't want to speak for the applicant.
We can live with a 10%.
Okay. Because we do have precedent concerns.
And so the board can make a determination as opposed to let us know what it is after we decide the case.
I just wanted to say that I, I really have, I, I don't have any objection to that as variance as it is. So it's different than a facade sign, and it's much more artistic and has a very different impact. You almost have to look for it in that. So for me personally, that is not a heavy lift of a variance to approve it the way it is right now without all the conversations around whether it's 5 or 10 or whatever it is. I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm, I'm curious because Mr. By just raised the point, if you painted the wall green and had sandies, you would just be looking at sandies. The fact that they're painting the wall with multiple colors is what's triggering all this discussion about, is it a sign for the whole space or not? So to me, it's like, if I wanted to paint stripes, does that make it a sign? Or if I wanted to paint it just green, would that not make it a sign?
It's not the, this is just my professional opinion. It's not, has nothing to do with the colors, whether it's all green or whether it's the mural it's shown. It's that the sandies identifies the, the restaurant and it's on the sign. So, you know.
Yeah, but they've, they've just stipulated it'd be less than 10, or be 10% in that range.
Yeah.
And, and I agree with Ms. Van Order. I don't have an issue with it at all.
Do you think that there's a precedent concern?
Well, I, I reflect back on a prior application we had where they removed a mural request because we were treating it as a sign, and I wasn't happy with that either. I, I felt it was more artwork than signage. And then, you know, I actually like the direction that we're going here because I would like to see more artwork on our buildings.
That's how I feel.
To the extent that your concern of board members with respect to prospective applicants maybe taking advantage of, of, of murals or any, any, any artistic work along with signage identifying the, the property, the, the other side of the coin may be that the 10% max based upon the squaring off might help settle those board members' concerns.
Yes.
It's just an unknown. It's just an unknown. So we're probably safe for doing that, knowing we're all perfectly happy with the sign as it is.
But, Mr. Chairman, I am not perfectly happy. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be in the minority, but I do want to express myself. The mural is probably attractive. Of course, this is just a concept. We don't really know what this mural will look like. But to me, even though it is a work of art, putting the name across it turns the entire facade into a sign. You could argue, I suppose, that it depends on how far away from that, that wall, you can read the word "sandies." You know, if you can read it as you're driving up the hill toward the, or driving toward the restaurant, coming from south to north, and you're still in your car, if you can read it from the street, to me, that makes it a sign. It makes it the third sign on the property when we allow one sign in our ordinance. And furthermore, if you square off the word "sandies," and I'm squinting, looking at the image on my screen, if the, the S is very large, if you put a rectangle around that S and fill it up to up to the size of the entire word, I believe you'll get about 50% of the, of the mural covered in your rectangle. So that gets you from 30% down to 15% when our ordinance allows 5%. So I, I, I just don't believe that it's reasonable to call this only a work of art and not a sign.
Well, I, I think we did say, or at least I said that we're looking at three signs, basically. Two on the poles and this one. And what we're dealing with is how do we handle this one? So, yeah, if we call this a sign, because you're right, we can see that it's sandies. How do we phrase the variance? I think that's what it comes down to.
If no one else agrees with me, then I'll be outvoted regardless of what I say further about this. But I, I just think we are setting a bit of a dangerous precedent. If, if the word were not there, it wouldn't be an issue.
But we're saying that it is, it is a, it is a third sign.
That's, that's my, so that's my comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lasso?
If it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application with the variance.
We're not ready there. We need to.
I'm sorry. We've got to get this moving on.
Yeah. Mary, did you have a question? Okay, seeing no more questions, and board members, any members from the pub? Did you, did I ask? Board members?
Questions for the planner, who happens to be the same individual as the engineer, would be next, as well as the public.
Okay. Any members of the public have questions for the planner who has the same name as the engineer?
And bears a striking resemblance.
Has a very, very seasonal tie on to that. So seeing none, I'll close the public questioning period. So at this point, we can open up for public comment. If any members of the public have comments on this application, please come forward and state your name. You can be sworn in to make your comments. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. And, Mr. Warner, if you would like to summarize the stipulations and.
The planner who bears a striking resemblance to the engineer, I got it right, as far as I understand it. Front yard parking setback from Hanover, 22.48 proposed and existing 35-foot minimum required, 13.10 feet from Speedway, proposed existing 35-feet minimum required parking stall size 9 by 18 versus 10 by 20 required, building facade signage. I think we're going with either a 10 or a 15% maximum for comfort level purposes of the facade, to the extent we call it a sign. And we are calling it, then, if to the extent we're calling it a sign, three signs versus one maximum permitted, recognizing two front yards, and that the third sign is a mural on a facade. The sign setbacks, five feet proposed and existing from Speedwell, Speedwell versus 17.5 minimum required, and 11.2 from Hanover proposed and existing versus 17.5 required impervious coverage of 88.03% versus 75% maximum permitted, recognizing that it's down from 96.12% existing. Those being the roughly one half dozen deviations along with preliminary and final major site plan approval. Conditions I have are outdoor, to the extent required, an outdoor of the township committee, an outdoor dining permit prior to commencing outdoor dining, recognizing state legislation makes it a permitted use and extended outdoor dining through November 2024, if I recall the statute correctly. The conditions set forth in Mr. Phillips' memo, the conditions that were stipulated to in the Environmental Commission's memo of October 3, and a there are more. Hey, bear with me. Security level lighting on at 10:00 PM in, with the understanding that there's a 9:00 PM close time for the restaurant.
Can I just ask a question about that? If, if in the future, the, the.
One hour post?
I would like to say, yeah, post hour, one hour post closing.
Well, that's for the board. Either 10:00 PM or one hour post closing would be a, a reduction of security level lighting. And double-stripped parking spaces in the event. We're granting the approval because we'd be then granting the 9 by 18, nine-foot wide versus 10-foot wide. Well, DOT waiver or permit, but all outside agency approvals would be required. I said that the double line, yeah. I think that's everything. After consultation with the professional planner who does not bear a striking resemblance to the applicant's engineer, I apologize. It's late in the year.
It's getting late.
And Mr. Stewart, did you want to add anything to that or?
No, just a clarification on the closing time. We, the applicant intends to close at 9, but in the future, if she wants to stay open until 10 on a weekend, I just don't want to limit it to just having to shut the lights at 10 o'clock. I'd rather say one hour post closing.
Okay, great. So at this point.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion that we approve this application for preliminary and final site plan approval with the waivers, conditions, stipulations, and variances that have been enumerated by our council. And I'm very comfortable with allowing them to close at 11 o'clock at night or 10 o'clock at night, so that, that deviation, I think, is fair. It's other restaurants on the street do the same thing. So I'd like to make that motion.
Do you have a second on that?
I have a second.
Ms. Murphy, any comments, discussion, deliberation?
I have a quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the applicant for revitalizing this property that's been vacant for, since the beginning of COVID. Who Non has a long legacy in the Fairchild neighborhood, and I think everyone in the township was very happy to see another restaurant go into that location, and we wish you the best of luck and success with your new venture.
On the roll call?
Mr. Quillen.
This is where I hate going first. I, I like everything about this application except that very large sign, which I think we may find people in the future telling us is a billboard. But I like everything else about it. I will abstain as my vote, as my non-vote. So I abstain.
Okay. Mr. Alleso?
Yes.
Mr. Jorphy?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Mr. By?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Van Order?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Well, just in response to Mr. Quillen's concern, which I understand, each application does stand on its own, so future applications that come in, we'll look at it independently. So I vote yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good holiday.
Congratulations. Thank you. We got a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, we're returning to the Morris Township Planning Board Meeting of December 5, 2022. Ms. Santiago on the roll call, please?
Mr. Quillen?
Here.
Mr. Nun?
Here.
Mr. Alleso?
I'm here.
Ms. Murphy? Mr. By? Mr. Jorphy?
Here.
Ms. Van Order?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Flowers?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Benoit?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
And I, Santiago, here.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next hearing is Springbrook, Springbrook Country Club. Santiago, would you read this, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is PBO 4-22, Springbrook Country Club, site plan, variance, I have waiver. Block 5802 Lot 1, 9 Springbrook Road, in the OSUU Zone. Applicant proposes to expand and upgrade an existing parking area and expand a paddle tennis warming hut as part of a second-story addition above the existing tennis shop. Mr. Kelly?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warner?
Yes, I had an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified mail and published both on November 22nd, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the case.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
And we'll take the meeting until generally 10 o'clock, depending on where we're, where we're at at the time, adjourned if we need to. So just one point. I noticed that the Environmental Commission report occurred between TCC. I just want to be sure we get that report into, those comments into our record because it looked like they had some important comments. I'm, I'm not sure whether the TCC reviewed them as part of its secondary, its second review. Other than that, I want to.
Are you talking about the comments about the paddle hut?
The entire EC report.
August 5th, right?
Of August 5th. I don't know whether the TCC included those evaluations, those comments in their October review. So if not, then we just need to do that during the course of the, of the hearing.
Applicant has them, correct, Mr. Kelly?
Do.
Okay, they'll be addressed.
Okay, great. Then you may proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to see everybody. Larry Kelly on behalf of the applicant, Springbrook Country Club. I realize the hour of the evening, Mr. Chairman, and it's early in the week. We intend to be relatively expeditious. We'll certainly go through all of the questions that the board members may have and answer everything to your satisfaction. But our intent tonight, and I'll be brief with my, my opening, just want to give a roadmap of what we hope to do this evening. Will be two witnesses. First, we'll hear from our project engineer. He'll walk you around the site. It's an existing club. It's a very large site. It's about 130 acres. We're proposing very limited accessory improvements within the body of this property at the country club. We've been here for years, and the improvements are accessory in nature. They're all permitted types of accessory improvements, and they're all for the existing membership of the club. Nothing is changing by way of club intensity, use, membership, none of that occasioned by way of this application for these limited accessory improvements. Our engineer will walk you through them shortly, and he'll talk about the limited relief we have. By way of what they are, just in my proffer, they involve expansion of off-street parking. Again, it's for our folks that are already there today. It's just some improvements for the swimming pool area, primarily in our staff. We're short on parking today under the code, so this is an improved condition. We are proposing site lighting improvements. We will honor the township requirements relative to shut-off time, low lighting for security lighting, the temperature of the lighting source, all those things. Our engineer will walk you through it as well. There are stormwater management improvements. And then there are other accessory improvements, again, to the tennis hut, as was indicated, which is, you know, a modest addition going up. It still remains underneath what the top height is for a single-family residence within the zone and without the zone, as a matter of fact. So the top height does not comply with the accessory standards, nor does it in square footage. But again, it's part of a country club, 130-acre property, so it's a little difficult to be in full conformance with what that code provision, you know, tends to have a requirement for and a goal of by way of compliance with accessory structures. So nominal overall on this site. Our engineer will take you through all that. Then you hear from our project architect, Jeff Royding. Jeff is also a licensed professional planner. Jeff will walk you through the paddle hut improvements. We'll walk through those plans, and we'll talk, in I think, limited fashion, about the relief that is sought. We'll walk through those plans and we'll talk, in I think, limited fashion about the relief that is sought. It is somewhat nominal, but we're not going to discount it. It is relief nonetheless, so we'll describe what it is. And it primarily relates to off-street parking, stall size, the accessory improvements and the paddle hut improvements relative to square footage and height, as I've indicated already. And again, through it all, these are permitted accessory improvements on this site that the applicant's proposing. We do have the benefit of the board reports, including the Environmental Commission report. I think, and I will let our engineer testify to this, that we have no issue complying with these reports. Our calculation methodology might differ somewhat in the reports relative to steep slopes and relative to the, a few other items there. But our engineer will walk you through that as well. But generally speaking, there are no glaring issues with the reports that the applicant cannot and will not comply with. And with that, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is start with the first of our two witnesses, if we may.
And actually, I'll swear on them all. If I may, Mr. Chairman, as well as our board professionals, if you all raise your right hand, to all four of you, swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. So our first witness will be our project engineer, Harrison Barney. Harrison's office is the Scrivener of Record. He is a licensed engineer. This will be the honor of his first time testifying before a board, however. So Harrison, if you can give your name, spell your last name, and provide your credentials to the board, please.
Sure. My name is Harrison Barany, last name B as in Bravo, A-R-A-N-Y. Bachelor's of Science from the Rutgers University with a concentration in civil engineering. I've been working on civil engineering, civil engineering projects for close to 10 years now. Done several sites in Newark, Irvington, the Oranges, as well as Morris Town, New Jersey. And yeah, I'm glad to be here for the first time.
Okay.
But if I may, licensed in the state of New Jersey, correct? License remains a good standing, correct?
Standing and current, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Harrison, if you will, feel free to please walk the board through our existing and proposed conditions. And Mr. Chairman and counsel, I think that what you're going to be seeing tonight, a little bit old-fashioned with the paper after seeing the, that presentation, we weren't used to this. We've been digital for years with the township, so this is pretty impressive now. But we're going to utilize the paper this evening. And I think for the most part, it is lockstep with what was filed. If there's any deviations, we'll let you know and we'll start, we'll start calling out exhibits as we go through them.
Is it all right if I take the microphone?
Sure, just don't start singing.
And they're all last revised September 12th? Would that be accurate?
Yes, it is. The version I have with me today is revision C dated September 12th, 2022.
Okay, we can, no need to mark anything as an exhibit that's up there, as long as it hasn't been colorized or changed. We could just refer to the plan sheet numbers.
Okay, I do have an exhibit, but it will be brought up later in the, the hearing that I can mark. But sure, but as I, as I start, again, we're talking about the address. The subject property today is an iron Springbrook Road, block 5802 Lot 1 in the township of Morris. And we are located in the open space governmental use zone. As Mr. Calley had said, the lot size is about 130 acres. And if you look here at the aerial map supplied in the cover page, the area shade in it blue is the lot in question. And there's two, two parts of the lot I'll be talking about today. One is located in the eastern portion of the site, which is our parking lot expansion located across from the pool. And then the second area is the tennis hut expansion area located more in the southern portion of the site. Can everybody see the plans or?
No, I guess if you everyone needs to see it. Okay.
And I believe the board members have the plans as well, so certainly they'll be following along.
Okay.
Just, do we, we had, these are on our website, right? Can we have the gentleman in the camera room pull it up on a computer back there? For those at home?
Oh.
Mike or Peter?
Yeah, just give us a couple minutes to find it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Apologies.
Then he would need to know every time to change the slide.
I can refer to what she, what she I'm talking to. This is not working.
He, he obviously can hear us.
I can refer to the sheet number each time I'm speaking to, as I flip.
May he proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay, so as mentioned by Mr. Calley, we are seeking several variances for the site, four of which are related to the parking lot expansion and two are related to the tennis hut. I will go in deeper detail as I go through the plans about these variances. But generally speaking, the variances for the parking lot are for buffer requirements as well as parking stall size and the parking requirement for this zone. The tennis expansion variance is for maximum height for an accessory structure as well as a building coverage for an accessory structure in this zone. If I may move to the parking, the parking requirement in touch of the parking lot expansion part, portion of the site. Based on the current use of the site, we are required 305 parking spaces, of which 160 are currently available as, as of today. The parking lot of question that I will be talking about has 53 parking spaces currently, and we will be adding 33 spaces to that parking lot, bringing us to a grand total of 86 parking spaces in this area. We do, we do acknowledge the electric vehicle parking requirement as well. For this zone, we are required 3% of the proposed parking spaces, of which is six parking spaces that were required, which we recognize the Environmental Commission report, which we are glad to, I did prepare an exhibit to show where these spaces are actually going to be. So I'm just going to jump to the exhibit now so we can get an aerial view as well as see where these electric vehicle spaces are going to be. Yeah, so this is, the sheet marked.
The exhibits are online, they're showing this?
This exhibit was not.
That was not included.
It's not included.
Inquiring the location of the environmental, I'm sorry, EV parking stalls in response to the Environmental Commission's report.
Yeah, so this is the, the only exhibit we prepared tonight. It's an aerial image of the overall project area of the lot. As you can see down here to the south is the tennis hut area. And right here in this red circle, that is our parking lot expansion area. And to the north is where the current parking lot exists for the main building, the main clubhouse. There are currently about 100 parking spaces there. And there is, that's where we're going to be proposing our electric vehicle parking spaces. It's more easily accessible to the public, and there's already a hookup for electric vehicle as it stands today right here, circled in red. We do identify
Today, one's the aerial image, and it's depicting, among other things, the subject parking lot by the swimming pool, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
We do also recognize that one of the spaces needs to be handicapped, so we know, we will make one of the existing handicap spaces electric vehicle hooked up. So if I may continue to our site plan. I'm now moving towards the Thank you very much. This is the existing conditions plan for the, the parking lot area. This is identified as page SP 103 in our site plan drawings. This identifies the existing 53 spaces that are there today, located across in the pool. The pool will be located right here and the clubhouse up to the north up here. Currently, as it is today, the, the site slopes from the north to the south in this general direction. Down here is one of the golf tees. I'm not sure actually which hole it is. Maybe the last hole, but can confirm that. As it exists today, the parking lot is striped. However, a lot of the, the striped spaces are not consistent, and there, some are smaller, some are larger. Some spaces are 15 feet long by eight feet wide, so they're not compliant as they are today. And the drive aisles are also only about 20 feet. They do vary in size from 22 to 20 feet in width. So with our new proposal for this site, we're actually making things better. We're making spaces uniform, we're making drive aisles wider. And I should also point out that the site currently is, it is wooded to the north and to the, to the east. We do have two neighboring properties, two residential zones to the north and to the east as well, which I'll go into with our proposed design, how we're taking that into account. Also, I just want to point out, there are two utility poles located, existing and within this area. We are proposing to relocate them, since they will be in the way of our new design. So they won't be completely moved to another area of the site, but they'll just be slightly adjusted so that they fit properly around the parking. I'm now flipping to page SP 104, which is our parking lot expansion tree removal plan, and it also identifies the steep slopes or environmental sensitive areas of the site. So in total, we are actually removing 47 total trees on site. 11 of them are actually already dead. I, I know in the Environmental Commission report, there's a calculation based on how to, you know, replacement trees for so many that are removed. So in the 47 that are being replaced, 11 are dead. We had talked to the engineer, Mr. Hanson. He indicated that the 11 dead trees should not be counted towards the, the tree replacement total number. However, we are providing more than what's, what's required anyway. Our calculation is that, you know, 36 of, 36 live trees are be removed, four of which are a larger caliper tree. So in the ordinance, it says if a tree caliper is 24 inches or, or greater, you have to replace five trees for each tree that's removed. We are doing that. And so in our calculation, we have 31 trees to be replaced. Whereas in the Environmental Commission report, they have 38 trees, I believe, to be replaced. And we're actually providing 47 trees to, new trees in this area, which is over exceeding the requirement for trees. I would also like to point out the, the steep slopes map. Also, in the Environmental Commission report, there was a map generated indicating that there were some areas of steep slopes. However, within the, the township of Morris ordinance, their calculation for steep slopes is based on 10-foot contour intervals. So that is how we calculated our, our steep slopes, which, as you can see, we don't generate any disturbance within the steep slope area. So that we were following the township ordinance, and that's what we would, you know, like to defer, comply with. And then just moving on to the next sheet, SP 105. This is basically our site plan sheet, our parking lot expansion, site grading, utility and stormwater management plan. As you can see with the new layout, it did expand in size. Were able to get 33 more spaces, as I said before, up to 86 spaces. All of the spaces are nine feet by 18 feet long, which is a variance that we're requesting, which the town, the town requires 10 by 20 for visitor parking. We defer to the, the nine by 18 parking because it is an RSIS Resident Site Improvement Standard typical parking space. It's used throughout all New Jersey. And we feel though, as you know, maximizing the space to get as many parking spaces as we can. This is an adequate-sized parking stall for this use. All of the drive aisles are 24 feet wide, so it provides ease of access, easy maneuvering. And we are proposing some grade changes. It is sloping in the same general, general direction, however, the slopes aren't as steep. So we're improving that. With the grade change, we are though installing a new retaining wall, which wraps around about half of the site, a little bit more. It's only four feet high at the highest point. It is one of the variances that we are asking for because the variance for buffers, it requires a, a retaining wall four feet in height or less to be at least 50 feet away from a residential zone. We are proposing the retaining wall 25 feet away from the, from the existing residential zone. That is also one of our variances is for our setback buffer from this residential zone. So our closest portion of our proposed parking lot is 25 feet when it should be 75 feet. The ordinance states that the buffer for this area in the OSU Zone, your buffer has to be 10% of your lot depth or width, whichever is greatest, or 75 feet at a minimum. So 75 feet is what we calculated to be the minimum setback requirement. We are proposing 25 feet. Now with the neighbor, I will go into our, our landscaping plan after this, but we are recognizing that neighbors are there and that, you know, the buffer is a good thing to have for sound, light, all that, so we are taking that into account. As in regards to stormwater, that is another comment that we had in regards to the Environmental Commission report. The township ordinance states for increasing in the area in 500 square feet of impervious or more, you're required to provide dry wells for groundwater bounding analysis, groundwater recharge, sorry. And the requirement is three inches of rainfall over all your new impervious that you're adding to the site. So previously, the site was already paved. We're adding about 10,000 square feet of additional pavement. So that additional 10,000 square feet of impervious coverage is what's taken into account when sizing for the dry wells. So that's one thing that we would defer. You know, we spoke to Mr. Hanson, the engineer, about it. He, he was in agreement with our sizing for our dry wells and our stormwater management. We do, we will comply with, we received some comments about adding a few more inlets, which we would gladly, will gladly do to capture more of the stormwater. So with the stormwater, the site, the, the site sheet flows from the north to the south. It's being picked up in a catch basin here. So essentially, we would add a few more catch basins, some over the dry wells. It's being captured, brought into the drywall system where it infiltrates into the ground, gets stored. And then in higher rainfall events, there's an outfall pipe, four-inch PVC pipe that then comes out into an area of riprap that discharges near the grass of the golf, the golf course. I'd also like to add that we are adding a wood beam guide rail. It starts from this portion of the site about little to the southeast corner of the, the parking, and it will wrap around to near, near the entrance of the driveway. That's just to protect, you know, the golf course from cars or vehicles driving past, you know, the proposed parking and potentially ruining the grass in that area. It also provides some pedestrian protection as well. Let's see. And I'm going to move on now. This is page SP 106. This is our parking lot expansion site landscaping and lighting plan. I know in the Environmental Commission report, there, they had not identified where our proposed landscaping plan was. This is the sheet where it is, it is shown. As you can see, the green areas are area of disturbance in a sense, and our trees are placed throughout, throughout the area. And keep in mind, we are, like I said, providing more trees than what's provided. And we're taking into account the trees that were being taken out along the existing buffer. We're putting back those trees to, to shield, you know, the parking lot from the neighbor. And, and yeah, so we're adding 47 trees. Now, in regards to the lighting, we are using those two existing utility poles. We're adding two, two new light fixtures to those poles. And we're adding five new street poles within the parking area itself. All of the, the street lights and the mounting, the new lights on the new existing poles will be mounted at 15 feet, which is the maximum for the, the, the ordinance, what the ordinance states. All of the fixtures are dark sky compliant, they're shielded. They are LED fixtures and like I said, they're shielded from the neighbor, and there is no light spillage onto the neighboring properties. There's a, no, no negative or adverse effects to those neighbors. I should also note that we are, we note the, the ordinance for, you know, lights on at night, where lights will be turned off at 10:00 PM and will come back on at 6:00 AM. We are going to keep maybe two, two lights that are located closest to the driveway on during the course of the night, only for security purposes and safety reasons. That was a, a comment from the TCC meeting, I believe, that, you know, we, we implied and added a note to our plans to make sure that the lights are on a timer and some would remain on at night for, for those reasons. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna turn to our next sheet, SP 108, which is our traffic circulation plan. This is just a plan that kind of shows, you know, the maneuverability and circulation of a vehicle throughout the site. We always pick the worst-case scenario, the farthest space in the site. How easy is it to get to? How easy is it to maneuver back out and pull out? We did run software to, to confirm that, and there is no issues with, with the design of the parking lot circulation. That really sums up my portion of the, the parking lot area. If I may move to the tennis hut. Now I'm turning to page SP 200, which is the tennis hut existing conditions and demolition plan. Again, referring back to the exhibit aerial, this is, as you drive into the site, it's located on your right as you're pulling in prior to the clubhouse and that pool. This is the existing condition plan as the site is today. Right here in the center is your one story tennis hut building, surrounded by several tennis courts, brick pavers, paved walks. We are not increasing any impervious coverage at all on the ground floor. However, we are building the second addition, which puts us over the maximum building height for accessory structures of fifteen feet to a height of thirty point one seven feet. So that is one of the variances we are requesting. The second variance is for building coverage for an accessory structure, which for gross floor area, not allowed more than nine hundred square feet. We're proposing, I believe it's thirteen over thirteen hundred square feet of building coverage. So I'm just going to flip, I'm going to flip to the next page, which is our proposed. This is she SP two oh one, tennis up proposed conditions plan, building height and calculation. As I said before, though, we are requesting those two variances for building height and building coverage. There is also a proposed second story deck that can leave is over the existing pavement with a stair that goes up. The architect will talk more about the improvements in this in this perspective. But in regards to the to the gross floor area, the existing square footage is six hundred and thirty eight square feet. And we're adding it, it's going to be increased to eight hundred and twenty seven square feet. So you're only adding about two hundred square feet of additional building roof coverage. And with that, that basically concludes my my portion.
Okay, thank you. It all went by pretty quickly.
I'm sorry.
Before I go to the board members, could could you? I don't see on these drawings really the the location of the neighbors.
Sure.
In relation to how close is, I can't really see where the neighbors are in relation to the project.
I can, I can take you to the aerial exhibit if you want, that might be helpful. So so this is the existing parking lot as it exists today. We're extending the the neighbor's property line basically follows this this green area here. And we're we're leaving about some of these trees here that remain that are close to their property that we're not going to be disturbing the gray, they're not going to die. We're sort of keeping those intact, but essentially we're we're moving, you know, parking space are so closer to their site. So we're going to be twenty five feet away from essentially this this green area as shown in the aerial.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, so this is Longwood and Overlook are the neighbors impacted?
Yes, over overlook is located to to the northeast up here, and yes, Longwood as well. I believe there's two, one or two homes being built there now, actually, back there.
Mr. Lesso?
Yes. The pavers, yes.
If if Mr. Lesso could turn his microphone on.
Thank you.
A question on the location of the parking facility to the current residences.
Yes.
I think you testified previously that what's required is fifty feet of distance.
Seventy five feet.
Seventy five feet of distance that's required. What is it currently before any changes are made?
I I don't. This is our existing condition, so I don't, I can.
I think it's somewhere between twenty five and seventy five.
Probably between forty and fifty feet as it is now.
Okay, so it's already out of noncompliant and
Correct.
The the current proposal is to further shrink the distance.
Yes, it's already within the seventy five feet, and we're expanding it more east to be within twenty five feet rather than fif- roughly fifty feet.
Okay, and in terms of where the other you had on the first exhibit, you had pointed out where the other parking space is located.
Yeah.
Are there residences around the other parking location?
There is, there is a residence here. And there is also a new new house being built now. Actually, this is the new house right here. This is was not there before, it's been built the last year. But that is the closest house to the existing parking lot as it is today.
And what's the buffer distance to the other park?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
So I guess I'm just looking at it, so the section of the parking lot with the spots facing the homes of the twenty foot, twenty five foot buffer. What is the rationale for having those spots on that side of the parking lot and not up top against the other buffer line? I know we're dealing with two.
You're you're talking about why?
But I'm just curious, is there topography, the reason why the spot, the new spots are on the right and not up top?
You're saying, why are they not up here and why are they located here? They're not looking up here, yes, because of topography. The site slopes pretty gradually up towards the top, and as you get higher, it gets even more steep. There's a lot more vegetation up towards the top. And just the disturbance of the existing soil and the trees, it would be, it's too much. We did look at adding continually to add rows in that direction. And you'd also, it it would just create more of a dead zone at the top for your parking rather than this is just better circulation wise as well. Keeps the cars closer to the exit and pedestrians, it's a shorter walk to the exit. And so for those reasons, that's why.
Okay. I guess my my concern is with headlights and taillights, I know you're adding a buffer. I would imagine if you if we were to go the other end, you'd have to put a retaining wall in, and then the headlights wouldn't be reaching the residences on that side or not, is that not?
That that's a good question. They, so as it stands today, the actually topography of the neighbors, they're they're much higher than our our elevation is now. So if you're looking out from their property, you're looking down at the parking lot, so any any cars or vehicles that we parked there, there won't be any headlights that will be shining into their property. And along the lines of, we're also planting these trees that will provide is an extra buffer on top of what's already there to shield them from the headlights or any vehicles, any noise from that area.
Okay. And those will those be evergreen or the what what kind of plantings would those be?
Yeah, we're proposing some maple trees and some evergreen trees as well, but we're open to the board suggestion, the arborist or whatever species the the board prefer. We'll work, we'll work with them.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
It should be noted to the board, it should be noted to the board that property owner to the east just constructed a rather large carriage house over there. And the carriage house lies between his house and the parking lot, so his own structure is blocking the views, so to speak. To this new parking lot arrangement. And topography wise, I don't know exactly elevation wise, but I'm believing that the the ground elevation on the the vacant lot on overlook and then the house with the carriage house. The the elevation is at or higher than the top of the the lamp, so the light shed is going to be nonexistent because they'll be above the light.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman. I just, I'm I'm trying to figure out. And I'm looking right now at the at the the aerial view on the front page of your materials. It appears that the parking lot expansion is reached by a road that goes around the swimming pool. Right now, it's pretty heavily wooded and lower than the homes. But the homes and block, see if I can read this, fifty fifty nine oh four, it looks like it, the parking lot more or less abuts to three or four of those lots, and as you say, it's lower, is that correct?
Yeah, so if you're if you're driving into the site, you you enter from from here, Springbrook Road, and there's an access drive that comes up. You pass the pond on your left, you pass the golf course on your right. And then your pool will be following on your left, and this parking lot will be on your right. As you continue up through the site to the main portion of the lot, the hundred spaces parking lot with the main entrance, that goes even higher, there's actually you know, a steep grade change that goes up. So, yeah, yeah, so they're they're at a much higher elevation than than those neighbors and where we are with this parking lot. So as you can see, the parking lot sits low. So there there shouldn't be any adverse effects and results of, you know, headlights or or light glare or whatnot for that perspective.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, just picking up on the trees and the landscaping. We do have a do not plant list. Have you, are you familiar with that? We passed a resolution.
An invasive species or something like that?
List invasives, please do not plant these, and it lists natives, please do plant these. So that would be our reference to you, and if you could commit to complying with that as a a term of approval. I would make that motion, and I'd be happy with that, and it's, we generally agree on that.
Yeah, we have no objection to that.
Okay, that would be good. I want to clarify the tree calculation. I'm still a little confused on that.
Sure.
What you said and what's referenced in the environmental commission report. So what they come up with is a total of thirty eight trees to be replaced total. And and you come up with what thirty one is it?
Yeah, so there's two two factors that come into play, what how we got different numbers. The first is, are you counting dead trees or not? So after our first TC TCC meeting with the engineer, the engineer, Mr. Hanson, declared that any dead tree should not be counted towards the replacement number of trees. So that's what we took into account. So we have eleven dead trees, so thirty six live trees are the trees that are actually counted as a total number. And then in the environmental report, they they counted all the trees, all forty seven, so they counted the eleven. And in regards to the large diameter trees, which is, you know, anything over twenty four inches, and I believe less than thirty six. You're required to plant five trees for every one of those that you're removing. We counted four and the environmental commission counted five because one of those was dead. So there's a discrepancy there. The 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 other thing where the the difference came is, so we counted the total number of trees with the ratio, so you you're required to plant zero point three trees per everyone you're removing. So we did that as a told the total number, and we didn't remove the larger diameter trees from that total number. So we kind of counted double the large diameter trees, we counted them twice towards the zero point three and the five replacement. The environmental commission did not, once they considered them large diameter trees, they removed them from the total count. So that's how we ended up, they ended up with a larger number and we didn't. But again, we are providing forty seven trees and they're requiring thirty eight, so we're, you know, supplying more than what's requested.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
I I the I I I would like to suggest, I think, in my opinion, it would be a good idea if you kept the dead trees in the total, even though it's not required by the ordinance, I think that would be a nice gesture. I know there's been quite a bit of tree removal at Springbrook. I know it's been noticed by people and there are questions about, you know, how you make decisions about tree removal. And in my opinion, keeping the dead trees in the calculation would send a good message.
Yeah, we will, we can do that for you, yes.
So what you just explained, the point oh three, I didn't do that in my case, so I'm not sure exactly how that fits in the calculation. My my suggestion is what I just said.
We can count those dead trees and, yeah, we're still, we're still compliant with how many trees to be replaced, so.
Oh, even even, okay, the forty seven.
We're providing nine more than what's required by the environmental commission.
All right. All right, well, good. I'm glad you're doing that. Thank you. The and then there was that reference to the Tree of Heaven, removing the roots, and are are you committing to that as well? That was recommended in the environmental commission report, I believe.
I believe that was the common regards to you wanted a professional arborist to come out and I believe.
Well, just because the roots are so difficult, and if you don't get them out right, the tree comes right back.
Yeah, we can, we'll make sure that it's removed properly and then in the right way.
That tree will be totally removed. That's number, that's number twenty two. And that lies in the parking area under pavement, so it would be removed totally because it's in the pavement area, it's roots of all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then I didn't, I don't believe you, one other environmental commission recommendation to, you know, the way you're adjusting, you're you're calculating the stormwater calculation is by the additional impervious. And they're suggesting that it should be calculated by the total impervious, not just by the additional. And that is not required by the ordinance, but I I again, here's a place I think that would be a, I think to me that makes sense, and I I'm I support their recommendation. So I'd like to hear what your thoughts on on that.
It's a good comment about, you know, considering, I mean, considering there is no stormwater management there before, right? So anything that fell on that pavement just ran off the site and was infiltrated into the grass. So we feel as though, you know, we're only adding ten thousand square feet and we're adding, you know, five dry wells, they're eight foot diameter, six foot deep, five of them. And with an outflow control device like a outflow pipe. So the fact that we're adding stormwater management to a site that doesn't exist at all, we feel is adequate. But we can, if you want, add add a few more dry wells to, you know, make up for extra impervious coverage that may be, you know, runoff from that existing impervious coverage.
That would be, that would be how you would address that?
Yeah, I would I would say we could add add a few more dry wells to to.
How many would be needed, do you estimate?
If you're if you're basing it on the total area, I can't tell you that right now, but it'll be, it's basically two hundred, two hundred fifty square feet for every thousand square feet of pavement. Time, you know, it's three inches, that's the three inches of runoff, so I don't have that number off the top of my head. But we we can, I'm sure we can go comply with that comment. We'll we'll work with Mr. Hanson to to upgrade the system.
Again, I realize it's not required, but I I like the precedent, it sets for future.
Yeah.
As well as this.
Yes.
The, okay, so on the the lighting on the on the hut, are are you adding three more lights in the in the tennis hut area?
I would like to refer that to the architect when he speaks, yes.
Okay. I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
Just a follow up question from what Ms. Wilson asked you.
Yes.
Could you tell me where the water is running if you did nothing? Is the water running into neighbors? Is it running toward the pond at the bottom of the hill?
So right now, this, like I said before, the site slopes from the north to the south, so it's sloping towards that that the last hole, I guess you could say, the golf course hole. It's just infiltrating into the grass. There's an existing swell located alongside the parking lot, which we're improving, we're actually adding rip rap, so there's no soil erosion that's going to happen there. But currently, all the runoff just runs sheet flows off the site into the grass and gets infiltrated, so we're improving it in that case.
Not really necessary to add these because we're not adding water to some other location other than your own, which is your grass, and then if it seeps further, it goes to the pond that's in front of your golf course.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Could you show us where the retaining walls are and whether they're compliant and
Sure.
And are they somehow related to the neighbors?
Almost there.
All right.
Okay, again, I'm referring to sheet SP one oh five, our site plan. So the retaining wall, it begins down in this corner, the southeast corner, and it wraps around and finishes near the second driveway. It the maximum height of the of any point in the retaining wall is four feet. It's going to be a segmental wall like Allen Block, some type of that kind of block. And it's really just for grading purposes, because we, like I said before, the slope, the cross slope of that parking lot, we made it better. It was steeper before, so when lowering that and because we're expanding out the parking lot, the the need for the retaining wall was there.
So actually, the retaining wall hugs the parking lot over those three sides.
Yes.
And actually, cars parked against, I guess that's the east side, the headlights go right into the retaining wall.
Yes, they do, because the retaining wall is about three feet in height here.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And the maximum height is four feet, which is permitted under the ordinance.
Yeah, retaining wall four feet height or less within fifty feet, that's the variance that we're requesting, has to be fifty feet away, we're twenty five at the closest point.
I have one question on that. Can can you just highlight? Can, can you just highlight why the area where the new parking is going? Just kind of show us on, I mean, compared to where the existing parking is, where's the new parking going in?
Yeah, you don't have an overlay which shows the difference.
We can, we can provide that, but basically, it's, it's, we're almost essentially adding this last row of parking here. So this row of parking was not there before. The existing parking lot ended about here, with, right within the fifty-foot buffer line. So as you can see, we have, this is your twenty-five-foot line up here that wraps around. This is your fifty, and this is your seventy-five. The fifty-foot line is about where the, the existing parking lot was before.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. It's pretty accurate with where it was. Yeah.
That's very helpful, thank you.
So, yeah, so your parking lot was up here before. We're adding essentially this, this piece, right?
And then do you need? Does the retaining wall require any kind of drainage behind it?
Uh, that's a good, that's a good question. It probably will, we'll add a perforated PVC pipe that'll probably, we'll wrap around, and then we'll tie into our, our drainage system. So there's no water collecting behind there.
Okay.
But overall, the topography of the site, it slopes this way and slopes down, down the side. And that's why we're providing some riprap here. That was existing before. There's a little swell here where water is collected. So essentially, the water is coming down around, and it's discharging out here and infiltrating to the grass, all the excess, yeah.
Do we need to stipulate that PVC whole pipe, or that that's just an engineering? That's part of the construction?
Yeah, it is on the details.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Then it's part of the approval.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I have.
Just one, one final question. So you're adding the row of parking to the right. Can you talk a little bit, or put on the record, the elevation change from the parking lot to the, to the residences that are behind that?
So, so up here, this is elevation three hundred and twenty-seven. And, you know, the closest, the closest point here of our parking lot, this is about three twenty-six or three twenty-five. So it, it, it's about the same level, but it starts here and it drops off, and then it picks up. We don't have any additional topography. This is just where the site starts.
Okay.
So essentially, it will, it will increase gradually and get higher from there.
It continues upward, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more board members? Why don't we go with professionals? Mr. Phillips, you have any questions?
Larry, I assume that your planner's going to deal with the roots on the variance. You will, okay, so I'll defer until their planner testifies.
Okay, Mr. Warner?
I have one, well, I have one to begin with. The, you said the additional spaces are, is the strip to the, well, to the right. I guess that's the southeast. But that's sixteen spaces, correct?
Yes, sixteen additional.
I thought you said there were thirty-three added to the fifty-three to get, or eighty-six.
Right, well.
Where's the other seventeen?
It's because, well, if you, if you go back to the size of the spaces, they weren't the correct size. You know, we expanded slightly up this way, right?
On the balance, I, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you picked up seventeen spaces in the balance of the swimming pool parking lot by virtue of making them all nine by eighteen?
Yes, and we essentially kind of squared off this parking lot before it was in oblong shape.
So you added some?
Yeah. The parking lot, you know, was, was not really perpendicular with the driveway, kind of went up this way, and it was skewed. So we straightened it out, we made it more uniform. That's where the additional spaces came from.
So those numbers were correct, and, and that's where the balance, the other seventeen, came from?
Yes, I've counted many times.
And, actually, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hanson?
Uh, no, I have no problems. I go by my tree removal counts. The environmental board is not aware of what the engineering department's doing with regard to that, and likewise, the same thing with the drainage. While it's, it's good to add a few extra basins, the site is flowing onto itself. So they only have to capture what they've created new as part of this concept. That's why they're only proposing five dry wells. If the entire parking lot was, was brand-new parking lot, then there'd probably be fifteen out there. But they only have to capture what they've created, not what currently exists. And impact-wise, it's draining onto the last fairway, and then down into the drainage ditches in the, in the golf course itself. So it's not going to impact adjacent properties because the adjacent property to the parking lot is the golf course itself.
So there are drainage, drainage ditches in the golf course that are capturing what's coming off?
Off the fairways, off the, I don't know what you call the areas, that, out-of-bounds areas, that type of stuff. And it drains it off to streams and gullies that flow out towards the pond.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, does it make sense to ask for more dry wells? If they're basically draining to themselves?
They're draining to themselves, and they're addressing, they're addressing what they had to address per our stormwater regulation, which was the increase in impervious coverage. I mean, it's good. It's, it's putting water back into the ground.
Right.
But is it really necessary? It's going out into the one area of the fairway and draining and soaking into the ground also. This isn't like Sandy's soul bites, where ten feet off, off the property line, you're off the parking lot, you're on another property.
Right, right.
You know, or, or somebody putting a pool in and paving their whole backyard with concrete and paper patios and all that other stuff. They have to because they can't do what the golf course is doing, which is pushing it somewhere else and letting it absorb into the ground. So it's, it's up to the board how they want to do it. They've addressed the, the volume of, of capture, and I'm, I'm fine with that along with the trees.
When you, I'm sorry.
Had the golf course come to us and say, we've got six or seven dead trees up there, our office would have answered, are they a safety hazard? Well, they'll fall into the parking lot. We'd say, cut them down. Then you go and do the tree count for the tree removal for the parking lot. They don't exist. So don't count them if, if they could have been cut down ahead of time.
Makes sense.
So.
And we don't have any kind of rule that says you have to replace your dead trees?
In an instance like this, it's commercial. They would be made if they're cutting trees down to replant trees. And the way we've been dealing with the golf course is, they don't have to be replanted in the same location as where they're cut down. They're used as filler to fill in holes and create buffers in other locations on the, on the golf course. So.
Thank you.
And they, they, they are exempt, according to our tree removal ordinance, for general golf course maintenance. Anything that's in play, or the tree has the ability of falling into areas of play, it has the right to be cut down as part of a tree removal permit. Doesn't have to be replanted, but I make them replant. So.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Hanson. Are, are you saying that there's no benefit to doing the capture on the additional, on the original impervious because it flows into the golf course?
I would say, yeah.
It flows into the fairway?
Yeah. Yeah. But that's a pre-existing, non-conforming condition. They are capturing the, the ten thousand square feet of new and following our ordinance with regard to that. And like I've said, nothing's downstream of this to cause a problem.
And would any of the old parking area, because of the expansion, end up going into the new drainage?
Yeah.
Anyway?
Yeah, yes.
So it wouldn't be the full volume of the old parking area that would be draining off? Some of it would go into the new?
Right.
Drainage anyway? So part of it doesn't want to impose additional financial burdens on the applicant if it's really not going to benefit?
The way that they've got it graded, probably half the new coverage and some of the old coverage is going into, into the, the dry wells. But it's compensating for areas that aren't being captured, that are going to go into the riprap swell and, and, and go out into the parking lot.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Quillen?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I should have asked these earlier. This is going to be fairly brief, but I have a couple of parking questions. First, is this an employee parking lot only?
No, this is for visitors of the pool, members that use the golf course. It's essentially all of them.
Okay. And the lot will be completely restripped, right?
That's correct. We're also, I'm sorry. I was going to say, we're also adding stop, stop, new stop signage as well for the driveways and the directional arrows as well, as you, as you can see on the plans.
Would you be willing to stipulate to double-stripping the parking spaces? To help incent people to park in the middle of each parking space?
Sure, yes.
Okay, I think that would be helpful. And I, I will refrain from making my usual speech that, about ten-foot-wide parking spaces. So, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Everybody on the board thanks me for that one.
You know, I do have one more question on, on the hut. Is the use in the hut going to change from what the existing use is?
No.
Okay.
I think the architect can explain more about that.
Okay.
But, yeah, he can.
All right, that's great, thanks.
I have one last question about the hut. Just, just on the timing, I, I know, I was noticing the pictures are dated June seventeenth, right? Twenty twenty-two? And at least the ones in my packet. But they, they weren't on the original application that, like, that went to our environmental commission. So can you just explain why?
I, I can explain that. So the original application that was prepared was for the parking area improvements. That was the primary application. During the penancy of that application, and then after our first T C C meeting, the applicant determined whether or not there were other improvements that were imminent for the club, and it was the paddle hut expansion. So what we did was we parked the application with the planning board T C C, pending plant supplements, which were going to be the architectural plans for the tennis hut. All of that was consolidated into the same application. We went back to the T C C, and that's why the protracted timeline between the initial plan set and the secondary one. The secondary one was, I don't want to say an afterthought, but it was eventually determined to become part of the same application as it could, and really should have been for efficiency purposes anyway.
Thank you.
Sure.
And there are no changes proposed for the tennis courts or any of the play? It's all going to remain the same?
That's right. This is, this is it, the limited areas of improvement are the parking and the tennis hut expansion, along with the accessory improvement, site lighting, stormwater management, and that.
Okay, all right, thank you. So at this point, I'll open up to questions from members of the public. At this point, it's questions pertaining to the testimony by the engineer. There'll be question period for the architect later on, and there'll be a time to make general comments about the project. But right now, if anyone has any questions for, regarding the testimony of, of the engineer, please come forward. We have a microphone, and just state your name and, and, and your address.
Hi, I'm Leslie Wentz. I live at Three Armstrong Road. I'm not sure if this is a question for now, but we have a lot of questions about the lighting. So is that you, or is that the architect? All right, and?
Sorry, can you spell your last name?
W E N T Z. We, partly, I wondered if the lighting that currently exists, and you may not know this, is dark skies compliant? Or is that only something we?
I'm, I'm not aware. I know there's the existing utility poles there, and I believe there's like a floodlight on each of them. I'm not aware that they're dark sky compliant, but they do look outdated. But I can't, I don't know if they're dark sky compliant or not.
Okay, so I just wondered if any of the lighting issues that are currently in existence are going to be addressed in all of this? Because the current lighting is really, really terrible. And it, I think it affects a lot of neighbors, and it definitely does not seem dark sky compliant to me. So I don't know if that's something that somebody in the board can address, or if somebody can come to our neighborhoods and at nighttime and see what it actually looks like. And it sounds like it's just going to be much worse with the current application.
Well, to comment on what we're proposing, so the light fixtures that we are proposing are dark sky compliant, and they're shielded. So essentially, if your, if your house is over here, the light will be pushed out away from your house, and there won't be any glare directed towards your house. And the light calculations that we did run based on how they're mounted and how they're shielded and the type of fixture, they're not, there's not supposed to be any light emissions onto your property for any of the adjacent properties. So with that, I don't believe there's a negative impact that will be on your property with the new, the new light poles. But, yeah, they'll, they should be much better than what is today.
Okay. Well, and I guess that's my other question. Is that the only, if it, it affects your, flows onto your property, then it's not compliant? But if it's very glaring and visible, that's okay? Like, that's where I'm a little confused, because the lighting right now is very apparent to the, you know, neighbors around the golf course.
Yeah, so, don't forget too, we're also providing a lot of landscaping between those neighboring properties. So that's going to provide also a shield to any glare or visuals that you'll have of the parking lot. And on top of that, the lights will be turned off at night. Only, only two lights near, like, the entrance of that parking lot will remain on during the night hours. So that's farthest away from those properties. So there shouldn't be any negative impact on, on the spillage, you know, over onto that property.
Okay. Well, that sort of is my other question. I wondered who, is, does the club actually have an arborist? Or is Mr. Hanson the one who goes? And I just am curious, because there's supposed to be a tree plan for the club that nobody has ever seen. And so I was just wondering who decides what trees are dead? Because there have been a lot of trees removed at Spring Brook. It's hard for me to believe that every one of them is actually a dead tree. I also think the E C brought up the fact that there was no tree plan available to them to look at. And I just didn't, was that on your?
Yes, it's page, let's see, S P one oh six.
Okay.
So the proposed trees are shown here.
Okay.
And then there's a plant list below that shows the species and how many are being planted and, and whatnot.
Yeah, so was that available to the E C? Because I saw in their notes that they did not see a tree plan.
It should have been, yes, it was available based on the revision date of the plans that were received. I don't, they may have missed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And my other question is, are these just going to be small evergreen trees? I know you said you were going to plant some maples, but do we have any idea of the size of these trees that you're going to plant?
Um, well, the trees that were proposed of planting are two and a half to three-inch in caliper. So at breast height, that's the diameter and inches of the tree that's going to be built. But if it's going to, you know, help facilitate the neighbors, we can, we can, I know, produce a couple more mature trees from the start, if that, that helps, you know?
What's the height of planting?
I, we don't, we don't designate any height for plants.
Doesn't it correspond to the caliper?
The caliper is just the diameter of the trunk at breast height, so.
Right, usually, there's a correlation, isn't there?
I don't have that information, yeah.
Is the applicant stipulating to a particular height of installation?
It, and it does.
At planting, well.
It does vary with species too, you know?
Right.
The height, so I, I personally, I don't know that answer.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to conclude the matter. I'm seeing the hour, and I see you, a few members from the public might be asking questions. We'll come back on that. There should be a minimum height at planting, provided stipulated the record. Steve, so we will confirm that for you.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, they are showing eight-foot pine trees going in.
Eight-foot pine minimum height?
At planting height.
And I, I thought the architect was going to be addressing lighting.
He will, he will be for the tennis hut.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I misunderstood that, I'm sorry.
And also, for the, for the E C report, is somebody going to address that for the hut as well? Because I know they did weigh in on it, but it wasn't part of their formal site review because it came after the fact.
Yes, I believe, again, the architect will comment on those comments, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I just have a question. I'm Molly Ball. I live on Armstrong Road, which is about the sixteenth fairway.
And I'm sorry, your?
Twenty-one.
Your last name is?
B A L L.
Okay. And the number Armstrong?
Twenty-one.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I have a question. I know when the club completed the, their construction office, they were supposed to plant trees to prevent the glare from light. And they still haven't been planted. So is there a timeline for these trees to be planted?
What she's referring to is the, the maintenance building, administration building?
Yes.
Maintenance? That's only partially completed.
But I'm wondering, is this gonna also happen when they put in the, enlarge the parking area?
I, I explained that, at the office this afternoon, that I would go out tomorrow and, and see what was going on out there.
You didn't explain about the trees. You said there was no time limit.
There is no time limit to completing a site plan, and landscaping is part of the site plan. Therefore, since they haven't finished the project, landscaping could be an item that is incomplete at this time, along with half the building that they still had to build. They got the administration building finished just enough to occupy it, so that the, the temporary trailer could be removed, because they were catching a lot of complaints about the temporary trailer out there. So they got the building finished. I'm not sure if it's a full CO or a temporary CO. They moved in, the trailer got out of there. They have not finished.
But the lights are on.
They have not finished the work yet, but they are occupying the, the new building.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Pitt. I live on Mount Kimball. And I'm back up to the golf course, and it's a beautiful course, and I love the water and the lights are, are great to an extent.
Again, your last name and the number.
P I T T. Pitt.
P I T T. Thank you.
Two oh six Mount Kimball.
Thank you.
And
See with your question.
Yeah. And what time are the lights? You had said the lights go out at ten. I have a picture here from ten fifty-six PM, taken last week. They never go out at ten, ever.
I don't know. I can't speak to the existing lights, and if they're on a timer, they may not even be on a timer. Or if they have a sensor, I can't speak to that. But the new lights, the proposed ones that will be put in, they will have a timer that will shut off at a specific time every, every day.
Okay. And you, you, they, they will shut off at ten?
Yes.
Okay, so I look over at the hut, the hut. I will be looking at the hut and I look at the, the courts, and I'm a big fan of the, I don't play pickleball or paddleball. Put like hats off to those people who play in thirty degree weather. I think it's great. I'm looking right now at about thirteen lights. I'd like to submit these pictures. I really think it's important that these pictures be submitted. I'm looking at right now thirteen.
Please wait one second, so I can help you. Mr. Cali, do you have any objection to me swearing in Ms. Pitts? And her introducing the, these exhibits together with the testimony she's been providing? Okay. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to God that the testimony you've already provided, as well as that which we're about to provide, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. And you have how many photographs?
Well, I have one that shows the Gestapo prison camp light that comes into my bedroom every night.
Oh, are they on, they're on your phone?
Yeah, I have several.
Okay.
And I wanna just talk about one right now, which I took before I came here.
Right, we swore in, so you could do it, so it'll count as testimony. That's to help you. The other way I wanna help you is for the board to be able to, and everybody else to see these photographs. And, and generally, they're required to be maintained. It's like a court of law.
Right.
Administrative body, but quasi judicial. So that's why I'm asking where the photographs are. If they're on your phone, that might be problematic, but.
They can come to my house anytime at a clock at night.
I'm sure the board appreciates that, but the, the, but for, for this hearing to take place the way it has to under the law.
Right.
The, and I wanna help make sure we, the board and everybody could see your photographs without retaining your telephone, so, your cell phone. So but how many photos do you have altogether?
I have quite a few. I'll submit four.
You want to submit four? Okay. We, you can, anyone, as many as you want, you can, you could do. We'll call it O one, exhibit O one.
Okay.
O stands for objector.
Right.
And the, and you have three photographs. When did you take them?
This one I took tonight, before I came here.
Okay. And how are we gonna show them, I guess? Is there a way we can all, everybody, including the board members, the public can see them? Maybe since we're coming back on another night, it might, if you wish, you can present it any way you want.
I'll do it.
Copies of them.
That's fine.
And we'll submit them as an exhibit, so that the board can see what you're talking about, what you're talking about.
I'm talking about thirteen lights that are just glaring, just glaring into the home. And I love, I love the lights, but let's just get a little control over it, because then they reflect off the water. So actually, I'm seeing over twenty you'll see the pictures. When you, I think, so in theory, when you talk about this, it sounds great, what you're doing, but when you, when you it's, it's not, that's not the reality. I hate to say it. And I I wanna be, I wanna give a plug for the golf course. You know, I used to say, you can't wake up in a bad mood from, and look at the golf course from my bedroom, but now I have to have night shade, shades up, because I, it's just it's crazy. You'll see the pictures. They, I don't know what can be done. I mean, I know they can be shut off at ten. But are you familiar with dark night? Dark sky lighting? My impression was it's got a dome, so that the lights don't go up. The lights just shine down, because that's not the case with any of these lights, not one of them. They're like globes. Like, you know where Whole Foods is? And you ever drive by Whole Foods on Washington? That's what it looks like.
I, I can't speak to those existing lights. I'm not sure the location you're talking about. I'm not familiar and.
But aren't you the guy that's doing this, and you don't know?
I'm not dealing with the lighting at the tennis hut. Yeah, I'm only dealing with the lighting at the parking lot.
Miss, could you tell us, are these the lights that are on the existing hut?
Oh, my gosh. I have the Gestapo light in my room every night. There's a, there's a light that goes on the water. It is like insane. It used to, it used to be a beautiful yellow light. Now it's a huge, three huge white LED lights.
Do you know if that's in the parking lot or on the hut?
No, I know where they are. They're, they're the.
I'm asking you, because I don't know.
They're on the little peninsula that shines on the water. It's actually very pretty. Why they shine it towards my house, I don't know. Put it so it shines toward the golf course. Let, let the, let the clubhouse look at the damn thing. I mean, it's coming right in. It's crazy.
Okay, so you're gonna send those to us?
I'm gonna send them. You'll be really surprised. It's like really bad. And it didn't used to be. It used to be much more tasteful. It used to be softer. It used to be the yellow light. They were out. They never were out this long, and I don't, I, I mean, I'm not a lighting person, but I would think it wouldn't be that hard to, to put dark, what's it called? Dark sky lighting in?
Okay, so we'll, we'll, the applicant will take that consideration.
I'll submit the pictures. And, and so how high is the, how high is the hut?
Our, our plans are, it shows thirty point one seven feet, so thirty foot two inches.
So what is the, what is the height if you're standing in the room on the second floor?
The architect will speak to that.
Okay. And then are they having wild parties on that too? Because I hear do the hokey pokey during wedding season every Friday night. Do they have wild parties?
That's not in my expertise. I don't, I don't know.
To be a little loud.
Hi, Julie Winter, two ten Mount Kimball Ave. I live next door to Kathy, and I had the same complaint about the lighting. It's pretty bad. I've lived at two ten for thirty-nine years, and when I first moved in, I couldn't see a single building, not the paddle courts, not the clubhouse, not the firehouse. Unfortunately, Sandy took down a bunch of my big trees, and then the golf course has taken down, obviously, a lot of trees. So all the lighting is just exacerbated.
Do you have a question?
Yes, so. Out of curiosity, what, what changed in membership or activity to, to make the country club want to have additional parking?
Nothing. It was based on the need and the parking calculation. There's a large need for the additional parking, so that's why they were proposing this application.
Has it been an increased membership? I mean, has it been a shortage of, how many years has there been a shortage of parking?
There's been no change in membership, according to my knowledge.
There hasn't been a, a shortage of parking for years?
There has been, but the, the pool, the location of the pool and the membership and the club, the clubhouse, that's where, it was a driving factor for the, the parking lot.
Okay. And was there any consideration to having the employees in a separate parking area across from the firehouse, so we wouldn't have to disturb any trees? If you already have a parking area across from the firehouse and have the workers work there, I mean, park there.
The park, the parking area in question was already existing. We're making it better. It's not getting much bigger, but at the location of where it's at, it's, it's dire to where the location of the main entrances, the pool, all the amenities, so that the location of the parking lot itself is best, is best where it is.
Okay, but if, if you took the, the employees that parked in that area or closer to the, the club and moved them over by the firehouse, to me, you wouldn't have to have additional pervious area and take down trees. That's my comment.
So, when we say there's a shortage of parking, it's pragmatic and it's also under the code. So the code sets forth the parking mandate based upon a metric applicable to our use at our structures and what we do here on the property. So we're bringing it more to comply to the code with the parking increase, that delta of plus thirty-three spaces is a good thing, as far as the code's concerned. You know, the limited testimony that you heard from Mr. Barony tonight is that the parking proposed is in an area where it already exists. So it's a natural improvement, and it's important for the pool use on the club property. So I'm not certain how many other ways he can answer the question, but, but hopefully that.
No, no, I understand that. It just, to me, it'd be nice not to have to disturb the trees when you have another parking area that you could put some cars. And as far as the the new trees that are going in, what percentage of trees are gonna be eventually real tall trees like sycamores and maples and sixty foot tall trees? Will they all be that way, or just a certain fifty percent of them?
There's gonna be a variety of trees that are planted. We're proposing fifteen maples. And the remaining are gonna be evergreens. They're gonna vary in size, but mature, maturity, they will grow to a height that will shield from the neighbors, and that's.
Do you know what height that is?
I don't know. I can't say that. Yeah.
Cause, you know, evergreens, they can stop at ten feet. They can go up to eighty feet.
I mean, we, we can make sure that a percentage of the evergreens are mature, you know, mature over ten, fifteen feet in height.
Okay. If we could quantify that, that, that would be appreciated. How many trees are gonna be really tall trees eventually?
Sure.
And not just more shrub-like. And is the responsibility, if the trees die within five years, these new trees, is there an obligation to have them replaced? Is there a warranty?
The trees will be.
Trees that are approved as part of the site plan are to be maintained in perpetuity. So if ten years down the road they die, they have to be replaced.
Oh, that's good to hear.
Be replaced with a ten-year-old tree. They'll be replaced with a new tree and allowed to grow into what's there.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I send some pictures as well? Do I need to swear it?
I'll swear. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you've already given, as well as that which you may give, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All members of the public can introduce a sworn testimony, as well as any documentary or photographic evidence. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry. I also have pictures, so I would like to be sworn in. And send my pictures.
And you may have made a comment or two, too. So, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you've already given and that which you will give in the future is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Board members, I mean, I, I, I was a little a little taken back by the, the lighting question too, because I was thinking it would be an architect, but the, the issue of, of lighting in the parking lot. I would like to say that the, the dark sky shielded lights, of course, is something that you've proposed, something that we want. And if board members have any other questions or comment on this, but if, if you could, upon installation, be sure that the shielding you know, doesn't affect the neighbors, doesn't cross over into their homes and stuff. But I'm also concerned about the, the comments. She said the lighting can reflect off of the, of the lake. And then, is, is there any way, are you familiar with that possibility?
I mean, the, the portion of the lake isn't part of our application, those lights. I'm not referring what to, what lights you're referring to, but.
So we'll ask the architect?
Yeah, the architect will speak.
When that comes. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, but in terms of, of testing the shielding at the time of the installation, that's something you'll do?
We can do that, yeah.
Okay.
Post-construction light audit or test?
Yes.
Subject to review and approval of our engineering department.
Yeah, and of course, the neighbors need to you know, be at least, be able to witness that, make comment.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I have one, one comment. It has.
Just for the record, we have a stipulation as to that. Sorry for the interruption. The, the post-construction.
Right. So, so my comment is that our audience members are talking about current lighting and are not envisioning what dark sky compliant lighting actually is. And, and I, I think it's incumbent upon us, the board, and perhaps applicants that come to us to be more educa, I'm gonna call it education oriented in the discussion about lighting. So we are hearing application after, 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 after application that comes in now with dark sky compliant lighting, and it's not anything like what you're seeing now. I can, I can tell you that. So so the idea that you don't understand it is because you haven't seen it before. And I think it, it's with us, the board, to help educate the public on what that means. And I'd like to propose that somehow we think about how we might do that, and we not do it application by application. Maybe we have a public session or something that allows people to understand where we're going with this. This is something that we're actually supporting as a planning board. And I think it would be helpful for us to educate our public as to what we're doing and why.
I, I totally agree with that, and there, there, there's a lot to consider and to be learned by considering the dark sky criteria. And I, like, just one, for example, principles for responsible outdoor lighting practices. I took this right off their website. Perhaps this could be shared with the applicant for consideration of principles to keep in mind when you're constructing your lighting. It's useful, it's targeted, low light levels, it's controlled, and the color is adjusted. So that's just a starting point. But I do, I agree with Ms. Murphy. I think the dark sky, what is it? IDA, International Dark Sky Association, has a lot to offer us as a board, the public, and the applicants in terms of really good practices on balancing the needs of the applicant for good lighting and the needs of the neighbors to keep the lighting as low as possible. So I, I would, I'd like to see us look into that.
Thank you. So at this point, well, it's ten o'clock. So why don't we adjourn this until?
I just wanna know, who, who do we send the pictures to?
Please don't send them to board members.
Okay.
That would be an ex parte communication. No, it's, frankly, I think the best way to do it, if it's technologically possible, is if we could get printed photographs, so they can be disseminated at the next board hearing. When you provide your testimony, board members can, can, can review them, et cetera, or and I'll leave it to Ms. Santiago to let me know if it's possible or not for them to be submitted to her so that they could be as anticipated objectors exhibits.
Color printing a bunch of photographs is pretty expensive.
And it doesn't give the, to me, if you see a picture.
No, the digital's better.
Or if there's a way in which they can be, well, I don't, I'm, I'm not the technological expert.
Email to the secretary?
It needs to go to the in advance, preferably, or be brought. It needs to go to the secretary in advance preferably or be brought physically that night. So.
Yeah. Digital is much clearer. Digital.
Yeah.
So I would, I would. An objection from Ms. Santiago. So they, they should be submitted to Ms. Santiago as the board secretary so that they can be provided the next evening that we meet on this application, the next hearing date. And so you could testify and everybody can see them.
Yeah, on the website as part of.
You could put them on the website.
Mr. Warner, do you want to adjourn the meeting till? Well, yeah, I mean, you do the language.
I'm happy to, are we, Mr. Callie, we're going to carry this matter, correct? And we're going to carry to, why don't we get a date certain so that I can give that date, time and place?
I thought the chairman said midnight, but I guess it was 10:00 PM. I guess I'm a sureness to chairman.
It's midnight someplace.
It is. It certainly is.
The sky is dark and we're going to comply with 10:00 PM, I think. But so Sonia, next meeting date?
Very good.
Oh, is, it's available for finishing this and including, okay. Is that our reorg night as well?
Yes.
Okay. One other. Okay. Then January 9th works?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll take January 9th for now. Thank you.
Okay. So for the record, with the chairman's permission, this matter is being carried to January 9, 2023, 7:00 PM in person. And it'll be carried without further notice. This is that notice. And I'd ask counsel to provide an email extending time to act through the end of the month of January.
Will do.
Thank you.
I, I think we'll bring back Mr. Barney at the next meeting, but, but we're going to move on to architecture and planning thereafter. But I think we'll have our civil engineer, should there be more questions and it's probably going to be more dialogue than the lighting, I suppose. So.
Mr. Chairman, could I also ask that maybe when the applicant returns, they have a little more information about the landscaping? There was a lot of questions and it sounds like we weren't really kind of feeling comfortable on that. So maybe you could tell us like a pine tree or a maple tree, Norway spruce. When you talk about caliper of two to three inches, I'm almost positive there's a height that correlates to that. So it'd be good if you had that information. I think everybody would feel more comfortable knowing that they're getting a 20 foot tree.
Very good.
All right. So this matter is adjourned until January 9th.
That's a long time. Yeah.
Do we have anything?
We, we close public questioning just of this particular witness, but this witness is going to be back anyway. And so it may end up being reopened.
Okay. So other matters? Do we have any other matters on the agenda?
Happy holidays, folks. Take care.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
I made the motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Happy holidays, everybody.